Ask the clerk to first start by calling the roll.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Von Maselli.
Present.
Kelly Morrissey. Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Michael Ricchio.
I'm here.
Victoria Triano.
I'm here.
John Berry.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here, and Councilwoman Morrissey extends her regrets. She had a prior obligation, so she's not able to be here with us this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilman Berry, who has the prayer.
If everyone could please stand. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Southington and our people. And I also would like everyone to remain standing. On July 1st, a 40-year veteran volunteer firefighter from Company Number Two, Richard Kowalek, passed away. Rit was the captain of Company Number Two, and his loss is... has been greatly affected by the people at Company Number Two and throughout the whole volunteer fire department here in Southington and the paid firefighters. So I'd just like to extend our condolences to his wife and to his daughter, and it is true loss to the town of Southington. So if we could please have a moment of silence.
And if I can ask Councilman Dietzick to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add an item to the agenda.
Please.
Under Reports of Special Committees, item number C would be the Property Tax Relief Committee. Chairman Jim Bose is here in the audience. I know he was supposed to be at the last meeting, so it's just an oversight not to have it on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and as mentioned at the last meeting, part of the report that you'll hear from Chairman Bose momentarily is we also need to reappoint the committee. So I know Councilman Dietzick and Councilman Pulis, as well as Councilwoman Morrissey, served on that with him, so we'll be reappointing that committee later on the agenda to complete your work. So we look forward to that report. Thank you, Mr. Bose, for being here. Councilperson Communications, the microphone is open. Mr. Ricchio.
We just received a response. You letters had gone back and forth with the DOT on the bus route, and I think, I know there's people here, I think they're going to speak about it tonight. I think before we continue to, and I don't say this lightly, but waste everybody's time, the frustration from you to her and her back to you is very, very clear, that we need to decide, does this council want to move forward with buses in Southington or not? Because I feel like that's exactly what we're doing, is wasting everybody's time. And in this letter, I mean, she pretty much spelled it out very clearly, that there's no direction, there's miscommunication, they're come on, they're on our agenda, we don't know what questions to ask, they don't know what questions we're going to ask, so they don't have answers, and it's one big merry-go-round. And in the future, I think we need to make that decision, and she said it. Do you want it or don't you? And so I don't want to lead the people here on if the council doesn't want to, and if the people, if the council wants it, then hopefully we can incorporate them and give them direction and make them part of a committee to go forward and have a purpose.
So just to comment on that and to fill in the public, because they obviously haven't seen the emails, as a result of our last meeting, there were a series of questions that we had, and I would describe the response from DOT as lacking detail, to say the best. So therefore, I think, I know Councilman Triano, I'm looking at you, you and I asked the same question, I think, three or four different ways, and did not get a response. So as a result of that, I did follow up with them, and before we get too much further into it, one of the main questions that came up was, as we talk about these bus routes, and there's a lot of talk about Phase One. Phase One would basically, as presented to us, would take the route from Bristol and move that into Southington, just touching a very brief part of Southington, coming in from Bristol down West Queen Street and then exiting into Plainville. My concern at the last meeting, which I shared, is I wanted our town manager to get in touch with the mayor of Bristol, just to ensure that this is something that Bristol wanted. I don't want, I didn't want to continue if this is something that Bristol was not in favor of, and I've heard they are in favor of it. I'm happy to say that the mayor of Bristol did write back. I can read it into the record. "I have a local route that circles from North Main to Bristol Hospital and then back to North Main Street, which is totally useless. I have been advocating to unfold this route toward Route 29 Southington so we can get potential workers to our industrial parks, the hotel, lake compounds, and Amazon. I would be very happy to join forces to make this happen, as I believe it is mutually benefit beneficial for both our communities." So this is a big step, because now at least we have in writing the fact that Bristol is very eagerly interested in sharing our partnership and shifting the route that way. That was one of the purposes of the email, is to communicate that to them, because at the last meeting, we didn't have that information. The other main point of the email is, after the meeting, conversations happened about an alternate form of transportation for people in need in this community, and that's called the microtransit option. So that was also mentioned in the email that I sent. There really wasn't a response about the microtransit option. I don't know if you saw that yet. I asked her specifically, my follow-up was specifically elaborate a little bit more on microtransit, because that may be another option that we go in. It's something different than what we were aware of already. I have not received that response yet. So once we get that more information, that certainly will be helpful to members of the council, and I will forward all those on as soon as I get the response. So that's just a little background in why the correspondence happened, and again, I agree with you. I want to make sure that we are keeping this right on the top of our minds.
I agree with you. I think that's great information, but again, it begs the question, does the council want this? And that's never been asked. It's never been on the agenda for action. So we're going to spin our wheels, and we're going to have people do all these things, and does the council want it?
So I think...
I don't know the answer to that.
And I think the last step is, let's find out this information about microtransit, because it may be another option. And then basically, the direction that they gave today is, the action should be whether to approve further study of possible, a possible route into Southington, or adding public transportation into Southington. So that was the direction that both CROG and the DOT gave today. So I agree with you, and let's see what information we get, and then we can possibly add it in the next council agenda.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other councilperson communication? Okay, so moving on to Report of Special Committees. So first report we have tonight is from the Sewer Committee, and the chairman of the Sewer Committee, Dave Zoni, is here. I'll call him up to give a brief overview, and then I know the applicant...
Do you want to do Bose first? Do you want to do Bose first?
We put one on C.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we have the applicant here, so we'll have the applicant come forward and give a presentation, and then finally, if there's any town staff, and I know our assistant town attorney is here, as well as someone working with this, and we'll invite him forward as well. And I believe there's representatives from Ty &amp; Bond here as well.
We have several people. I'll introduce them at the end of...
Excellent.
When we open it up for questions.
Mr. Zoni.
Okay, I'm here before you tonight, because the Sewer Committee met on June 13th, and we have one item that will require your attention and ultimately, your decision. We received a request from the property owner of 295 Lanning Street to extend sewer service to said parcel, also known as Parcel 170069. This came to the Sewer Committee for review and recommendation, because this particular parcel is currently part of what is known as the sewer avoidance area, per the town adopted plan called the wastewater facilities plan. This plan was developed for the town by the engineering firm of Ty &amp; Bond, and the author of this plan, Laurie Carrero, is with us here tonight, and will be available to take your questions. This plan was completed in 2015 and recommended by the Sewer Committee for adoption by the council. The adopted plan was submitted to DEEP as part of the treatment facilities upgrade for their approval. DEEP approved the approval, allowed our project to begin with the help of funding from the state's Clean Water Fund. For several months of presentations and questions, members present at the June 13th meeting of the Sewer Committee made the following motion. A motion was made and seconded to approve the request to move sewer line, service line to include Parcel 170069, known as 295 Lanning Street, conditioned upon removal of an equivalent amount from Parcel 143016, known as 1316 West Street. This motion passed by a majority of the members present. Both of the above properties mentioned in the motion are owned by the same person, which makes this condition for approval possible. The Sewer Committees did voice concerns with this proposal over the course of the last three months. The first concern they had was maintaining the integrity of the aggregate of the sewer avoidance area as delineated in the wastewater facility plan. And additionally, this proposal would set a precedent of making carve-outs in the sewer avoidance area solely on the basis of legislative fiat. Those two concerns are what led to the passage of the conditional approval recommendation that is being presented this evening. We have most of the parties involved with this project here this evening, and they're all available to take your question. Our town engineer Keith Hayden is here, Assistant Town Attorney Paul Bedard, Assistant Town Engineer Jim Grapone, Project Manager from Ty &amp; Bond, the author of the facilities plan, Laurie Carrero. The property owner is here, Mr. Frank Fegola. The property owner's counsel is here, Attorney Brian Macorillo. Property owner's engineer Sev Bavino is here of Kratzert &amp; Jones. I'm going to open this up to questions from the council. I'll try to field all questions. I will send them to the proper authority that's here tonight, the most knowledgeable person about the question you're asking, and we'll go from there. Do you understand the motion that was made and the present...
I think what would be appropriate at this point is to let the applicant give their presentation, because there's going to be questions based upon the presentation, and then allow the town staff and Ty &amp; Bond to respond.
So your first question is, you'd like to hear the presentation from the owner. No question.
Can I ask one question?
I'm going to bring up Brian Macorillo.
Sure, hold on one second, Mr. Dietzick.
I just want to know, so it'll kind of tailor what I'm going to ask. So what, this is just a presentation tonight?
It's not on for action tonight, correct? Because we're getting the information tonight, and then it would be on the next council agenda.
And then how does this application get? Does it have to be by motion, or does it automatically come to us, because really, the sewer, or the town council has jurisdiction over the sewer?
I could answer that for you. You have a subcommittee called the Sewer Committee, but the, you are the actual sewer authority under town ordinances, so you make the final decisions on this.
So we have to hear it, though?
You have to hear it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, we'll have the applicant come forward.
Attorney Brian Macorillo.
Oh, okay. I think you're right. Document 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then they click.
Stick around. I just want to pull up the property.
Now you just scroll up the balance.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, staff, Brian Macorillo, formerly of 142 North Main Street in Southington, on behalf of Frank and Mary Fegola. They are the property owners that made the request to have their property included within the sewer service area. Right now, it's just on the border, the cusp of the sewer avoidance area. I first want to thank Mr. Zoni and the four other members of the Sewer Committee for their hard work through three monthly consecutive meetings. One of them's here tonight, Mr. Dietzick, thank you. And I guess Ms. Morrissey's not here tonight, but they put a lot of time in, although their hands were tied, because there's really no charge or mission, you know, with their subcommittee. My understanding is the subcommittee was created so that they could do a lot of the legwork for the council, so the council doesn't have to start busting through curfew times and all that and listening to all this, but I want to thank them for their time. As you heard from Mr. Zoni, the Sewer Committee did reach a majority decision at its last meeting, and they recommended that my client's property, they're actually recommending that the town council approve their recommendation, if you will. You're wearing your hats tonight as the Water Pollution Control Authority. My client's asking you to adopt the Sewer Commission's favorable recommendation. The property, as Mr. Zoni mentioned, which is on the screen, is 295 Lanning Street. So if you're familiar from town, Lanning Street, you know, from, if you go east on Lanning from Queen Street, the old Branigan's Restaurant, so across the street from Branigan's is the Faith Baptist Church. Just east of that property is my client's property, which is 12 acres, and just to the east of that is Doral Lane. Along the back of my client's property is I-84, as well as two of the back, two holes in the back nine of Hawks Landing. The property is owned by Frank and Mary Fegola. They purchased the property in 2007. In addition to just celebrating, celebrating their 54th, actually, wedding anniversary this past Thursday, they've lived in town since the early 70s. In 1973, they started a business known as FF Screw Products. It was a job shop that really was in 1,000 square feet of commercial space. They ran it with one employee. Four years later, they changed it. They now, they had 10 employees four years later. In 1982, they started making their own product under the name FK Bearing. In 1999, they formed Fegola Performance Systems, and now their companies are housed in nearly 200,000 square feet of industrial property on West Queen Street, and they employ over 100 people in town. All the companies are owned and operated by Frank, Mary, mother and father, to Maria, Al, and Deb Fegola. Their grandchildren, nine, are now the third generation in this family business. I'd just like to say that in addition to their strong work ethic, they really pride themselves in supporting many local organizations, such as the Southington PBA, Bread for Life, Unico, charities, and a recent effort, I think by Mr. Chapinski, to unearth and move the remnants of a water fountain from Walkley Park, the old Walkley Park, to downtown Plantsville. In fact, they also, if you've been in town as long as I have, there's the old building on the corner of Weston and West Queen is the transmission station. For the last four years, the Fegolas have donated that building to the Southington Cyber Knights. They are making their request to be included within the sewer service area for two reasons. One, they are filing an 8-30G application and development on this property here, and it is, as I call it, for the snowbirds, and I say that affectionately. This is a community where it'd be six months in Connecticut, six months in Florida, or wherever your choice of southern states. They're proposing what was originally, and this goes back a little over two years now, a community of 55. They were attached, they were duplex units, but it would be a 55 and older, age-restricted community. The evolution of that project has taken that number, and I think it was, it was news, you know, good news to the subcommittee, down to 31. 31 detached separate units, and we're requesting that this project, ahead of our filing with planning and zoning, is approved for sewers. Now, that 31 number, we backed from 55 to 31, allows us to pivot to sewers or septic. We could put this property on septic. However, the benefit to the town would be obviously the health to the town. We also have an arrangement, if this were to pass, we'd extend the sewers, which are right next door to this property. It's on the Faith Baptist Church. We'd extend that, and in doing so, they would, they would benefit by having a brand-new parking lot. They also would have their church and meeting house or prayer house finally connected to sewers. There's one building, it's a residence on there now, that's connected to sewers. The other buildings are not. Now, I mentioned this six-month here, six-month there, because if we look at the Plan of Conservation and Development, and particularly Pages 78 through 80, Section 11, it calls out the need for future housing in Southington. So this is a blend. So when I say it's 8-30G, what does that mean? Statutorily means it's an affordable housing. It's affordable housing, but it's for seniors. So Southington, if you continue looking at the Plan of Conservation and Development, Southington has a deficit. The goal is 10% of affordable housing units in any town or city. Southington's, it's at just about 6%. I could be off on that number. So it fulfills a need to get Southington to have some affordable housing stock. And the housing stock we're proposing is important, because if you look at the other part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, it talks about senior housing. And senior housing, we have public senior housing, we have, as it's called out, private, we have rental units. I think we have a lot of rental units, quite honestly. Mark Lovely just recently got a smaller area approved for, I'm not sure if it's age-restricted, but the same concept. So this is, this is a need in Southington. It's a market that my client has recognized, but it also fits in everything that the Plan of Conservation and Development calls out for. As I mentioned, the property's next door to 243 Lanning Street, that's owned by Faith Baptist Church. There's 165 parishioners that are in that church that simply just can't afford to do any improvements, infrastructure, anything. So this would allow them to take advantage of a great opportunity to do this. Part of my presentation, and Dave Zoni mentioned it, is going to be the property, because I, I had to think of a way, first of all, I had to wrap my head around this whole sewer avoidance sewer service area plan. I don't think it's been addressed before this council in quite a while. I don't think anyone, and again, I might be wrong, has ever come forward and asked the council to amend the map. And that's what your charge is. Statutorily, you guys acted Water Pollution Control Authority, you act that, and you have the right to amend the plan. By amending the plan, I'm requesting that you amend the map. So you, you take the line, which now is between Faith Baptist Church and my client's property, and you move it east. That would include my client's property. Again, that's simply a request. This property could be built on septic. So at the meeting, we had three meetings, and the first meeting, I think, was a little clunky, because I don't think, I strongly didn't know what Dave's charge was and the other members, and I think Dave may have had an idea, but he maybe not. We got to the second meeting, we started really talking substance. Unfortunately, Ty &amp; Bond, the individual there, wasn't working on this part, you know, of the plan. She was there, I think, just on the building part. So we didn't have anybody to give us some answers as to, you know, when was this sewer service area map? When was it put together? Who drew it? Why did they draw it the way they did? Was it based on zones? Was it based on some kind of estimated mythical magical number of, okay, we, we know this area in the middle can be used for development, so, you know, we'll do the calculations, and that's, that's what the capacity that our sewer plant can, can manage. Sewer plant's being upgraded. Ty &amp; Bond's here, it's great, we can, I think everyone needs to understand, you know, what, if the plant, in its current capacity and anticipated capacity, can include an additional development like this. So when we were at the second meeting, I think it was Tony Morrison, yeah, he was, he mentioned, he was asking questions, and I brought up another similar idea with Mr. Grapone about floodplain mitigation, the concept of saying, okay, well, we're going to take something here and put it over there, so we even things out. So I said, well, my client's got a piece of property on West Street. It's behind the store club, it's 31 acres. That's in the sewer service area. I said, so what if we take 12 acres of that piece of property, we don't put sewers on there, and we put sewers on this piece of property that's before us tonight? The idea was discussed, and it became part of the approval. So the property on West Street my client owns is in an R-40 zone. This is an R-80 zone. So actually, it's double. You know, you do the math, it's double. It's just in my, my simple math. So that was, that was a reason for a conditional approval. Of course, we wanted an unconditional approval, but, you know, talking it out, it's like, let's come up with something that makes sense, and that absolutely makes sense. Now, I'd like to hear if it makes sense from the engineering point, but from a practical point, it makes a lot of sense, so. Sev Bavino's here tonight. He was with me during the three presentations. He has a little historical background, you know, on perhaps why the map was drawn the way it was. He could talk, talk to you if you have any questions about the engineering of this, of this particular property, the proposed development that we're going, we're going to be submitting to the planning and zoning. You know, how it would be with sewers? Would it be beneficial? We're not looking to increase numbers of units based on getting sewers. We could put the same thing on septic, but we reduced it because we wanted to keep a 20 to 25-foot distance between each unit, they're all separate standalone units. Again, that was actually something that, reading the records, the minutes of the planning and zoning, when Mr. Lovely has approved, that was applauded. I mean, it was almost, I think it was unanimous. They liked the fact that, okay, they're single units, age-restricted, and they're separated. So we heard that, and we saw which direction planning and zoning perhaps would go in, so we went in that direction as well. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, Mr. Bavino's here, my client's here, if you have any questions of him.
You mentioned Mr. Bavino has a little background on the plan itself.
Yes, he do, yeah.
Would you like to share with us the background?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. My name is Sev Bavino, Planner of Kratzert &amp; Jones &amp; Associates. I'm here to give you some details that hopefully will help you make the decision. I'm going to repeat some of the information that Mr. Macorillo presented, but the property, again, in question is about 11.5 acres. He says 12, I say 11.5. I think it's approximately. Located on the north side of Lanning Street, east of the Baptist Church. The north property line abuts the golf course and I-84. This is kind of important, because this project's going to work with the golf course to do a unique arrangement there. The Baptist Church is, property is 5.1 acre. It is currently served by public water and public sewer. The last sewer manhole is about 350 feet from our southwest property corner. I want to put some on the screen.
No problem.
Yeah, that's right, that's right there. For orientation purposes, this is Lanning Street. This is the church property, that's our common boundary. That's the entire property. And the sewer manhole is right here, and the line is extended onto the church property up to this point. Our plan would be to improve this line. Right now, it's eight-inch line. Change it to an eight-inch, come around the church, and bring it to the property in this area. As you can see, the grades, these lines indicate contours. Every line is a two-foot drop in elevation. As you, most of the grades are running from east to west toward I-84 and Queen Street. The church property, as indicated, is on the official sewer map, sewer shed map. Our property is not, obviously. It is a unique situation, in my opinion. The natural grades, the location, and the proximity to the sewer should have placed this property on the official map, but it was not. It might have been an oversight, since we are at the same zone as the church, and we have a similar topography pitching toward the sewer and towards Queen Street. There's another issue that possibly was due to zoning lines and things like that, but I'm not going to bore you with that. I want to give you some details on the capacity and all the other issues. We are here to request that you include this property in the sewer shed to allow for proper development for the following reasons. One, it is my opinion, it's always a good idea for public health reasons to tie into public sewer versus using SEPS systems, especially when the utility isn't nearby. 350 feet, as I indicated, the manhole is right there. Reason number two, the residential flow for the entire town. By the way, I read the 287-page report that Mr. Grapone sent me, and these facts come from that report. The residential flow for the entire town is 1.72 million gallons per day. A residential home discharge, on average, is 178 gallons per day. If you assume 30 homes, the flow would be 5,340 gallons per day. would be 5,340 gallon per day, which works out to be .003% of the entire flow. So literally a drop in the bucket, so to speak, considering the overall sewer shed. If we consider that the total flow for the town, residential business and industrial, is 6.04 million gallons per day, this percentage, 0.03%, is going to be even smaller if you compare to the overall flow. Reason number three, the flow from this site will go to Queen Street, the Queen Street Pump Station. The future flow expected for this pump station is 188 gallon per minute. The capacity of the pump station is 260 gallon per minute. So there's no need to upgrade the station. It's in the report. The report was actually done prior to the construction of the new station. Right now, we have a new station on Queen Street. So the flow from this property that we are dealing with will go to the Queen Street Pump Station, which is actually over capacity. Reason number four, in the report generated for the sewer plant upgrade going on right now, Section 11.1.2 indicates that the sewer capacity is adequate for current and future flows, except a bottleneck could develop on West Queen Street Aircraft Road due to future development on West Street and Welch Road and Lake Compounds. To resolve the bottleneck, the report indicates some pipes would have to be upgraded at the cost of, could be a minimum of $65,000, up to $1,000,000 and $1,500,000 if the 94 homes and Lake Compounds decide to tie in in a future pump station. Right now, there's no pump station on Welch Road. The pump station would have to be near the college that's there now. Pump station was rejected by the town, so there's no approval by the voters for that pump station. And for your information, the subdivision, since then, has been built on it. 94 homes have been built on it on septic systems. The soils are very good soils. Even if the sewer pump station would be built on Welch Road, these people are not going to tie in. They're not interested in tying in. When you've got good soils, you don't have to die in the sewer. The septic system will last for a long time. This bottleneck that the report talks about, however, has nothing to do with Queen Street. So the bottleneck has to do with development that will occur possibly on Welch Road, West Street, and it has to do with the pipe sizing that would have to be upgraded, again, but it has nothing to do with our property or with our pump station or our pipe sizing. By the way, I worked for Lake Compounds, and Lake Compounds has 94 acres of land east of the main facility, which was developed into a campground. Again, they have excellent soils, but they chose to drain their sewer to Bristol. They have an agreement with the city of Bristol, and they're going to stay with them for the foreseeable future. And also, so you know, even if they decided to go south to the future pump station, there's extensive wetlands, there's a great issues. The Army Corps reserved a conservation easement on the property of Lake Compounds. When we relocated the road a few years ago, we redesigned the road to gain some land for Lake Compounds on the west side of Mount Vernon. So the Army Corps placed a conservation easement, so we probably couldn't even put the utility through Again, reason number five, I reviewed the official sewer shed map, and I noticed that many parcels are included, assuming future development. However, it is not possible because multiple parcels are cemeteries, 90 acres of it. Then we have multiple parcels which are open space, and I counted 40 acres just on East Street. We have a superfund site on Lazy Lane, 10.8 acres. We're not going to develop the superfund site anytime soon. It's a 100-year plan to clean up that site. Old town dump, 28 acres of the town dump is also included in this sewer shed for future service. Pine Valley Golf Course, as I indicated, 114 acres, 94 homes are built already and they're not going to tie in. There's also large parcels of land on the north side of Churchill Street, about 50 acres. These acres will be developed with septic systems because the soils are good, and the cost of bringing the sewer to the manhole that's next to Lowe's, a big, large building, would have to traverse large amounts of floodplains and wetlands, which a few years ago, we looked into it, and it was decided was too costly, and it was too much of an environmental impact. So that's going to be not sewed anytime soon. So we have a large number of acres which are in the watershed map, as, you know, assuming that they will be developed, or which will not be developed. So based on these facts, I can state that including our 11.5 acres in the sewer shed map will not have any significant impact to the sewer treatment plant. I hope that this information will help you in your deliberation and vote yes for this request. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, if I can.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dietz?
I have a quick question. So if I'm understanding correctly, what you just said is that if the application was granted without a land swap, it's a de minimis effect on our plant.
Correct.
So if there is a land swap...
It's even better.
Okay.
Can you repeat number two in your...
Let me check.
Flow capacity in the plant.
Residential flow for the entire town, just the residential flow, is 1.72 million gallon per day. And if you take a single home which generates 178 gallon per day, gallons, if you take 30 homes, the flow will be 5,340 gallons per day, which equals 0.03%. If you take it for the entire town, including the commercial and industrial, this percentage will go to nothing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bavino?
Okay. Mr. Lombardi? I have a question for Mr. Bavino or the Attorney MacRae. I don't think either have addressed for the public how the sewer line gets tied in. We keep saying the sewer line gets tied in, but I want to make it clear to the public on who pays for it, how it gets done, and things like that.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Again, referring to the map that's on the screen, here's Lanning Street, the sewer line, the manhole is here, the sewer line is on the church property. We're going to upgrade, the developer will upgrade the line and run the eight-inch line around the building and into his property. So all this work will be paid by the developer. If the town doesn't like it this way, we can extend the sewer on Lanning Street up to this area, and then cut into our property and serve the property that way. But it will be done that way. We have planning profile sheets to indicate that we can do it, and the cost will be by the developer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the applicant? Okay, so at this point, I'd like to ask town staff to come forward and give their presentation. I don't know if Mr. Gepone...
Mr. Hayden?
We have a, for your questions, or whatever you would like to ask.
Okay, so...
We have one other person here that wishes to speak. He's the attorney for the abutting property owner of the church property. He'd like to come up and just say a few words, and he's going to leave after that.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Attorney Mike Carrier, New Britain, Connecticut, here representing Faith Baptist Church at 243 Lanning Street. This is the property that is up on the screen over there. It's to, to the left, and topography-wise, it's west of the subject property and downgrade. The developer approached the church with the proposition of connecting two of the sewer manhole on the church property in exchange for reconstructing their parking lot, which is basically abutting the subject property, and making some other little improvements. So there's a walkway behind the church. The parsonage and church is actually connected to a septic system behind the church, and that would also be properly abandoned and connected to the new sewer line. That would go over to the manhole cover on our property. So there's a lot of benefits to the abutting owner, and they'd be grateful if the council approved this, so that they can make some needed improvements to their property at no cost themselves, at the developer's expense, which they've agreed to do in exchange for the easement.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Attorney Carrier, so the church, just so I understand correctly, the church has no problem with the owner of the property going right through the property, and so that he can have access to his property through the sewer, with sewers?
That's correct.
Okay. You said that, and I just said, I want to make sure I get that down. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Shoda?
Yeah, I think it's important that we, not enough for you guys, it's important for understanding what is the sewer avoidance area, how did we get it, and what is the criteria for which this board needs to look at. I think Ty and Bond...
Those are great questions, Mark, and I was just going to ask Lori to come up here and answer those three questions.
That's part of, I think, the, before they can ask any questions, Dave...
Right, they have to know what they're talking about.
They need to know what they're talking about. So step number one is, what is the sewer avoidance area? Big question. Number two is, why is it there? And the third thing is, if they do wish to modify it, what is the criteria for that?
Right.
My name's Lori Carrero, and I'm project manager from Ty and Bond. So I just have to find my map. How do I get that? Jim, how do I get my map open?
We all have hard copies of this current map we're looking at in front of you.
Okay, so I'm going to give you kind of like a primer 101 on how we arrived at that, this map. And what I want to make sure to differentiate is, the chairman of the Sewer Commission is actually referencing the wastewater facilities plan, which is this big binder that Mr. Gepone has with him. I did not author that entire document. I certainly worked on it. I worked on this part. I worked on a lot of the flow estimates that were referenced by the previous engineer. But another important piece of information is this four-page written document called the Water Pollution Control Plan, and this is something that I, you know, personally wrote based on the DEP template that's available. So, and I think this document is more important to reference as the town council than the actual facilities plan. But the facilities plan was the first step in the...
Can I just interject for a minute? Where is that document? Can...
We want to get copies of that to the council.
Okay. I mean, I have a copy, and do you want to...
Well, we can...
Yeah, you can distribute it. I mean, that wasn't in the packet that was...
I can send it to my office, and I'll distribute to the council.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the facilities plan was initiated because back in 2012, 2013, the town wanted to upgrade their treatment plant. And as part of that, you have to prepare a facilities plan that evaluates the condition of your system, both the plant, the collection system, the pump stations. It looks at what are the flows to the plant, what are flows expected to be, how many, how much flow is going to come in from neighboring communities to Southington, how much flow does Southington send to other communities in that border it. And then as part of the facilities plan, once this process is done, we prepare the Water Pollution Control Plan. So when we started off in the process coming up with this map, we had a workshop, and at this workshop were representatives from Ty and Bond, Mr. Gepone was there, Mr. Hayden was there, the planning department was there, the treatment plant operator was there, and we expressed the need that, okay, now that we're starting this process, we need to figure out where does the town have sewers, where do you expect that sewers will be needed in the future, and then once that's done, we can come up with a way of estimating what are the future flows going to be. So this plan started off as your existing sewer service map. It really hasn't changed much from that. We took the boundary of the parcels that already had sewer service, and then based on input from the planning department, where do they think growth is going to happen? You know, one of the main areas that they saw development taking place was in the northeast, northwest corner of town. Back in 2013 through 2014, there was a good possibility that Lake Compounds was going to come in. So we wanted to plan for that. There was that proposed 94-lot development off of West Street. At the time, there was a chance they were going to come in, so we wanted to plan for that. And what we also were careful to do was put the lines of the sewer area around parcel lines, so that we didn't split a parcel by mistake. We wanted to make sure that it was clear which parcels were in the area and which parcels were not. Once we had our outline done, we sent down, and we sent out to all, we sent the map out to the various towns, we sent it to the inland wetlands, we sent it to the planning department, again, because at the time, they were also updating the town's plan of conservation and development. And it's very important, from the state's point of view, that all of the plans be consistent. The sewer service area map needs to be consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development, which also needs to be consistent with the state's plan of conservation and development. So this was not drafted by Ty and Bond. It was a concerted effort amongst all of the various town agencies to figure out where they envisioned sewers going. Once the boundaries had been set, it was sent around to everybody for review, and it was approved at a town council meeting. I don't know the dates. But once we had that boundary set, we then set, as Ty and Bond is the engineers for the treatment plant, began saying, okay, based on this map, what do the future flows look like at the plant? Because we needed to say, we're going to upgrade the plant, how big does it need to be? We based our calculations on what the existing zones were for all of the parcels in the town. And as the previous engineer indicated, we used assumptions based on whether the parcel was residential, whether the parcel was commercial, or whether the parcel was industrially zoned. Residential parcels were given a flow estimate, I think 178 gallons per parcel is correct, based on their water use. And that's pretty straightforward. Residential water use doesn't vary much from house to house in a typical town. Commercial flows, same thing. You know, it's a restaurant or an office. They can vary more widely, but what we used is the average water use for all of the commercial parcels in town. So we felt good about our estimates for all of the commercial parcels. The big question mark is industry, because you've got industrial zone parcels, and there's just no way to know what's going to happen in the future. And quite honestly, treatment plant capacity is a prized commodity in any town, and it's your job to decide how that should be allocated. So while the gentleman is correct that, okay, if you take a parcel out, you'll lose some flow, and you add a parcel back in, you're going to bring in more flow. It's hard to predict. You know, if he has a known development, yes, you can estimate it, but that other parcel he's proposing, it's hard to know in the future what could happen. So I'm not sure if that is good.
I guess the question, if I may ask a question, is what is the criteria you look at? Because obviously, thinking of this in a zoning situation, obviously, in essence, you're moving a zoning line, and what happens if you move the zoning line one more time over, and one more time over? So I guess that's what I'm looking for, some advice on that, because I'm sure that's where the questions I got from my bosses, is that what is the criteria they have to look at, and then if this is approved, would the next, could it be almost like a domino effect? And those are some of the questions I was asked by my bosses, so can you answer that question?
I think that, you know, as to why certain parcels were included, that decision wasn't made by us. That was made by the town, the planning department, the engineering department, and the wetlands department. They made the decision as to what zones should be included and what zones shouldn't. And I agree that if you do start moving the boundary on a parcel-by-parcel basis, then you do risk a domino effect of, well, somebody said, well, you did it for him, could you do it for me? I'm next, and I'd like to develop my parcel. And that's certainly feasible, you know, because as the WPC, that's your jurisdiction to do so.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Ricky.
The first, Mr. Bavino mentioned that there were numerous cemeteries, open space parcels, essentially never going to be developed, that were included in the flows at that time. I would assume that when we look at new flows, those are taken out? I mean, if that's true, we have 90 acres of cemetery that's in the flow calculation?
When we did our flow estimates, we looked at any large parcels within the sewer area, and if they were cemeteries, if they were parks, Panthorn Park was one, if they were ballfields, we did not assign a flow value to them.
And how about open space?
Open space was not given a flow value. All of the, especially up in the, well, that's not in the area, but no, open space was not given a value. And then any undeveloped parcel was given a flow value with the assumption that it would be developed to the maximum number of lots within its... would be developed to the maximum number of lots within its current zone. So if you had a four-acre lot in a two-acre zone, it was just given a value for two lots.
My other kind of comment is, I looked at this map and you can see that it basically, in many areas, follows the zoning map. So this is maybe not a question for you, but more for probably Rob Phillips. It's the zoning map, we get zone change requests on a regular basis. So the zoning map is made to ebb and flow as the town grows or certain areas contract or we get open space. And I would assume that this type of map would ebb and flow as well. I mean, we mentioned, you mentioned earlier that the state likes to have consistency across agencies, but if the one department, the state mandates, and I think it's the legislature, that we accommodate affordable housing in our community, and you can put affordable housing in a R-80 zone, that they would also want to make sure that the health in that affordable housing complex is accounted for, especially if their sewers are butting it. I mean, wouldn't that make the most sense?
I think from the state's point of view, they don't want to get in the business of where sewers go and where they don't go. Their main concern in terms of determining whether it's consistent is they don't want sewers going in lands that they designate as conservation areas or protected lands.
So they don't want to get in the zoning of the town?
No.
No. But they want to mandate that we can put affordable housing basically anywhere except in an industrial zone?
I can't comment on that.
I have a comment, but I'll save it for later.
Mr. Dietzick?
I just have a quick question. This was the question I wanted when I sat on the actual committee. So I know this version doesn't have the future flow, correct, the map we have up here?
What do you mean by future flow?
Well, no, I mean, that's a different color.
In here, I believe that green represents parcels that are sewered and yellow represents parcels that are not sewered.
Okay. The question I have is that, it seems like the boundary for the instant parcel is, literally, it's just, it's 84. Is that correct? The westerly boundary is 84?
Essentially, I think.
So the question I want to know, was there science that went into that boundary or is it just because here's where 84 is?
No, I mean, the starting point was outlining where sewers are now. And then making a decision as to, do we want to move sewers further to the west? And the decision at the time was made to be no.
Well, no, that would be further to the-
To the west.
East. Unless I don't know how to read a map.
West is to the left, east is to the right.
Right. And east is to the right, which is, 84 is the line of demarcation where the sewers stop.
Up in the north part?
Yes, the instant parcel, so the top right, the parcel that-
Up in the northern part, that's where you run into a lot of the protective lands that are conservation areas.
So there is science that went into the decision. It's not just because 84 is there.
Correct.
That's your opinion or you know that for a fact?
I can tell you that, you know, we had a meeting after the planning workshop and one of the things we, they decided was, it says the northeast and east boundaries of the sewer area will not be adjusted as these areas of town are considered conservation areas.
So if you can just, I don't know if you have control of the map, if you can scroll down to the bottom of the map?
Scroll down to the bottom. How do I go down? Jim, I don't know how you do your mouse. Scroll down. I don't, I miss my mouse.
See, and it kind of sees like, if you look at the bottom, 691 is the barrier on
that portion. So that's my concern is that if we're going to deny someone's application for sewer and we're going off of a map that just uses highways, it seems arbitrary to me. But you said that there's science behind it. And that's my concern, is that I don't want, because there's a highway there, someone not to get access to sewer.
I can, from my memory, and these gentlemen can probably back me up, the subject of whether or not highways were taken into account was never a point of consideration.
I think the map may speak otherwise, but-
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for this map that we're looking at. This map was produced May of 2015. Now, the applicant just had some pretty strong arguments about why the Welch Road, Lake Compounds area would not be serviced by the Southington sewer system. The referendum for that pump station was in November of 2015, I believe. Can I get confirmation on that? Was that November 2015?
Your timing is caught.
Obviously, it was right around that time period, but I can't remember exactly. So my question is, was that, was this yellow area, Welch Road area, assuming that the referendum passed? Or did it? So if this map was produced after November 2015, would that Welch Road area still be assumed to go on sewer for the town of Southington? And if the answer is no, that has a major impact on the capacity of the Southington sewer system.
More of a question for Mr. Hayden than it would be for this particular person. Keith, can you talk to that question?
I think that when the map is developed, it's potential development. So the referendum turned down the pump station, you're correct in that. But that doesn't mean at some point in the future, another council, another set of, you know, another residents aren't going to revisit the issue. So the potential is there for development, so the plan has to anticipate that potential. And the capacity of the plant has to be such that the town is protected for a very long distance in the future for that potential development. So we can't sit here today and say, parcel A, B, or C, we think it's never going to be developed because it may be developed. So if it is, the capacities, the flows that were calculated anticipate that. And that's one of the things that DEP looks at, is that the large sum of money that we're spending to upgrade this plant is going to be a wise investment and that in 20 years in the future, the town will be protected with adequate capacity for development that could occur. So that's really the reason for this map, is to make sure that if development does occur, the whole town is protected with adequate capacity for the very large investment that we're making right now.
Go ahead and then I have a follow-up question based on that. So what I'm hearing tonight is two sides of an argument. And it's quite, in my opinion, it's quite, it's a very weak argument to say that our system will not have enough capacity for this application. That's my opinion. I will also say that we, as a council, need to be very clear, as is the case with a lot of things, that we are not voting on this project. This project is in the hands of the developer and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do not have authority to approve or deny this project that's scheduled for application. So the only thing we're looking at here is, are we okay with this sewer line tying in if, and it's a major if, the planning and zoning approves it?
I would add to that, though, and this is why Dave asked me to have the assistant town attorney here, is that you cannot do, under our current regulations, you cannot do an ADG application without having sewers. So what you're doing is you're putting the cart before the horse. You're saying that we should approve the sewers and let planning and zoning take care of it from there. I'm sorry. Paul, why don't you come up and explain how the rules work? I'm not the town attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Paul Bedard, Assistant Town Attorney. Yeah, to just trail off of that, again, you know, tonight's inquiry in front of this body really is limited to the sewer question. And, you know, as it relates to that question, acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, the town council has wide discretion here. If you look at the case law in this regard, this body has wide discretion when it comes to nature, capacity, number, location of sewers, et cetera. And effectively, courts will not interfere with that decision, whatever it is, after you hear all of these arguments, unless there appears to be fraud, oppression, or some sort of arbitrary action. Ultimately, you're acting in this respect in an administrative capacity and the standard of review is really limited as to whether the action was illegal, arbitrary, or some abuse of discretion. That being said, where I think it gets potentially, and I'm going to use the word potential because nobody knows right now, we can't predict the future, where it becomes potentially problematic for the town from a liability standpoint, would be setting a precedent. So for instance, here we have proposed a land swap and that's just one of an infinite number of proposals that might be put in front of this body as a reason to adjust the sewer map. Any way that you look at it, you're adjusting the sewer map if you do that, the sewer service area map. So that being said, you need to look at what reasons might you do that for so that you could potentially defend, again, that potential claim. If someone was to say, well, you did it for that applicant, why didn't you do it for me? So looking at some of the case law on this, some of the questions that courts have delved into as to, okay, fact-specific, let's look at this parcel, what are some of the factors we're going to look at? You know, you have that fundamental question, is the sewer service area map irrational in some sense? I think you have arguments here that we have plenty of capacity regardless of the map, but then you also have people that I'm sure would support the fact that multiple departments, many hearings, meetings, et cetera, were involved to come up with this map. So there are two different sides that are going to look at that and judge that map, if you will. Secondly, you need to look at the property and say, is it feasible to utilize septic on the property? So applicant's counsel has answered that. It sounds as though septic is a possibility on this property. Third, you look at the property and you say to yourself, well, is it within an area designated for sewer service? Now, that sounds silly, we're here tonight, because it's not. But again, you look at that and you're going to evaluate that. Does the parcel abut a roadway where sewer service is available? We know the answer. Again, we're here because we're acting for an extension, but another factor to look at. Has the parcel ever been subject, maybe inappropriately or erroneously, to some sort of a sewer assessment? So in other words, was there unfair treatment or something inequitable as it relates to how this property's been treated economically from a sewer standpoint? And finally, does the sewer service area map support the current zoning designation and permitted use? So right now, the SSA map does support it. It's R-80, it's residential use, we have the ability for septic. But you're right, we do need to separate that from what planning and zoning would deal with, right? So that's the body that's going to look at any sort of affordable housing application. But ultimately, you know, this sewer issue, again, if you look at the case law on this, this is a critical issue. The case law indicates that the inability to provide sewer service, so for instance, in some instances, you might have a denial of a sewer permit and, although it doesn't apply here, an inability to service the parcel by septic. And there is case law showing that inability to have proper sewer service is in and of itself a reason that a body like Planning and Zoning might deny such an application. So two very separate issues, two very separate responsibilities. We're focused here on just the sewer aspect tonight, but I think the fundamental message to this council is that you have very wide discretion. There doesn't appear in my conversations with Lori at Ty and Bond, there doesn't appear to be an immediate issue with the map. So as we know, funding is predicated on our being consistent with the state plan. The sewer service area map is a key document in that regard and it's compared against the state's locational guide map. And Ty and Bond's GIS professionals have indicated that there's not blatantly a problem with the map. So by carving out this little corner, it's not going to cause noncompliance with the map. I think the bigger potential, and again, I'll stress that word potential, concern would be, what might it do from a precedent or a domino standpoint down the road? We don't have that answer.
But we would still be in control of those decisions.
Yes.
Attorney Dr. I have a question for you. So would the same standard of review apply on appeal if it was the denial of an 8-30G, which this would be? Is it still abuse of discretion or because it's an 8-30G application, are there different factors that would go into it? I don't know the answer. I'm not asking you off the top of your head, but I just thought about it when you said that. And I don't know if there's a case that speaks to that either, because that would change my mind.
Well, and certainly, so that obviously standard is going to apply to a planning and zoning action, but very different standards. So here you have this wide discretion. With an 8-30G action, the burden shifts. So the burden actually shifts on the municipality. So it's a very different standard, but again, that's not what this council, acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, is going to be, you know, dealing with.
So we can't be backed into an argument where, because we denied an 8-30G under the sewer, that now the burden's on us to prove that we didn't act arbitrarily?
Right, no, separate processes. So yeah, here we're focused on, again, your discretion as it relates to the sewers, the overall application and anything in front of planning and zoning, different standards involved there, so.
Mr. Rickio?
I'm at a little bit of a loss here, only because, and I served, as you know, served on the planning and zoning for eight years and many of those years as chairman, we had numerous occasions where we had sewer extensions brought before us. And if we want to talk precedent, the precedent was always, especially in the case where the developer's going to pay for a sewer extension, not even interrupt our public roadway, from what I can see by tonight's presentation, to supply a healthier environment than what would exist with septic systems. Because if the septic systems failed down the road, then the town would be on the hook to go in and build sewers for failed septic. That's the reality of it. And going all the way back to John Weisell, I have always been told that our sewer system has way more capacity than it'll ever, than we'll ever use. And that, when John was here, that was before we even gone through all these upgrades that we have going on. So I don't even believe, I think it's egregious to go to this applicant and say, well, we'll even consider, we may consider this, or the sewer committee voted on it to pass it to the council, if you give us some other land, like, what is this? Like, let's make a deal? I mean, come on. That's not even fair. Okay, but because, maybe because of some undue pressure, I'm guessing? I don't even think that's, I don't even think that's fair and I don't even think that the council has to act on that. The council doesn't have to act on the recommendation of the sewer committee, we can recommend our own.
Correct.
As he said, you have a lot of latitude.
And to look at, if you go back in the history of the last 25 years, we've had zone changes all over town. We've gone around properties, then now the sewers included. I don't know, as though we've ever gone in reverse. So I'm a bit confused. I mean, we have four or five paid staff members here tonight. I've never seen anything like this before, for a sewer extension. It's so, so simple.
Mr. Berry?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone that spoke tonight. I just want to, I pulled the minutes from the sewer committee meeting and just goes to the heart of what we're really talking about. Mr. Hayden was asked a question about, there was a lot of discussion about how did the lines come up? Were they arbitrary? So, and I'll quote the minutes. Mr. Hayden, the town engineer, said, "I would question whether the decision on different properties was arbitrary. And I believe that the engineers studied it and had a methodology in their selection. I don't think it's just an arbitrary line drawn. I'm not going to give you an opinion on an obvious yes or no, this is a good idea, but I think that the sewer zone or non-sewer zone and how it relates to capacity is a very important issue that, that's the reason for it. The map is there to protect the capacity of the plant. The plan was drawn up so that we could show the DEP that the money's expanded with this upgrade at the sewer plants, our money's well-spent so that we can protect the entire town for the next 20 years, so that we know that the money we spent will have the capacity in 20 years." So what they're saying is, the taxpayers of Southington are paying a lot of money for the upgrade to the sewer plant. So they had to come up with this map because you want to make sure that this sewer plant is going to be able to run properly with the millions and millions of dollars that is going into it to provide the sewer service in Southington. And there is a lot of state money also being used. Also in the minutes, Mr. Grapon was quoted about- Also, in the minutes, Mr. Groupon was quoted about, something about the whole issue about sewers, and he goes on to say, "One of the reasons to establish the sewer avoidance area, meaning areas that would not be serviced by sewer, or the sewer shed area was to check the flows. And that's what this document did, was a 20-year study on checking what the flows would be in the future." So, staff is looking at this, in my opinion, and I don't want to speak for staff, but their words are clear in these minutes, that they're looking at the overall health of the sewer plant. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert on sewer, the town of Southington spent a lot of money on this, on this plan, and it's the plan before us. Also, in the minutes, and the issue of carve-outs, and I'm glad the attorney talked about it, and Mr. Zoney, who is chairman of the sewer plant, you, and I'm quoting you, you said, you know, "Once they start making carve-outs, then, you know, that's a precedent-setting thing. They carve out a new, no sewer zone here, then another applicant from somewhere else on the border of the no sewer zone is going to come in and say, hey, well, we want to carve out here. So, the next thing you know, the aggregate starts to erode." And you're asking the question, am I correct?
That's correct.
So, and also, Lori, I appreciate your presentation. One of the issues we've seen recently at the Planning and Zoning Commission is the movement to higher-density developments. So, I don't know if your plan determined the 400-plus apartments that are possibly going to occur in downtown Southington. I don't think we've ever experienced those type of high-density developments, and it certainly doesn't appear, based on your plan, that you are anticipating 400 residential units in downtown Southington. So, that's also something to realize, there's, you know, there's two sides of looking at it. We also, I had a call from a resident saying, listen, I live in an R40 zone, I thought there was only going to be three houses here, and now I find out there's going to be 12. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission is using, you know, different type of rationale to allow certain type of developments in certain areas that normally, in the past, you didn't see happen. This land that we have before us, that want to be carved in now, is an R80 zone, so it's a two-acre minimum. I think Dorell Lane is right there, they have two-acre lots. I think, looking at the map, you think, well, you're going to have two-acre lots there. Those type of developments don't really have a negative impact on services in Southington. That was based on a study that was commissioned by the town, that an R80 zone usually is beneficial tax-wise, because there's not as many kids, the taxes are a little higher, the houses are bigger, more land, whatever. So, obviously, this is an interesting development before the sewer authority, and people don't realize the town council's a sewer authority. Maybe at the next council, we could look at addressing how the town goes about oversight of the sewer department, but that's another discussion, a bigger decision, issue. But I just wanted to point out some of these comments that were part of the minutes that were circulated to us. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But to your point, we do have the staff here. I know you said, Mr. Berry, you don't want to speak for them. So, Mr. Groupon, if you'd like to share with us the comments that you shared at the sewer committee meeting, to Mr. Berry's points.
I fell asleep, sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, Jim Groupon, Assistant Town Engineer. I was here at the time, I don't think Mr. Hayden was, when this document was developed and submitted. It was dated January of 2015. As you may recall, the document was a requirement to get financial assistance from the Connecticut DEP for the major plant upgrade. You cannot get on the priority list nor get DEP funding without submitting this document. So, with that being said, the town prepared in 2016 for the major $57 million plant upgrade. We held a public hearing on the plant upgrade, and also, as part of that, was a public hearing on the facilities plan. The sewer shed area, service area map, and sewer avoidance was discussed at that public hearing. So, the council at the time accepted the document and moved forward with the project, as you know, with the vote, which was successful.
Were there any requests for exemptions since then?
No.
So, this is the first opportunity for an exemption?
That's correct.
Okay.
I will say, in 20, in the document, it looked at flows between the years, three-year period, I believe it was 2012 through 2015. At that point in time, our flow was around 4.5 MGD. Our average capacity, design capacity of the plant is 7.4. I will say, in 2018, the latter part of 2018 and 2019, because of the rain and substantial runoff we've been having, our average daily flow at the plant is 8 MGD. So, our average design flow is 7.4. So, we're exceeding our design flow. We have a maximum capacity of about 12 MGD, and at the time of the study, I think we were about 65% for our maximum capacity, which is ebbs and flows of peak flow and things like that. So, again, this may be an increment, a slow increase above, you know, a drop in the bucket, as Mr. Bavino said, or Mr. Macarello, I'm sorry. However, the issue of precedent is, again, incrementally increasing this in the future and eroding at that design capacity and peak flow.
Okay. Has anyone reached out to the DEP? Because I know you said that they required this type of plan to see what the impact would be if we allow this exemption?
No, I think they leave it at the discretion of the Water Pollution Control Authority. I know, Lori, you've been involved with other towns that wanted to change the sewer service area. Some towns, I think, have gone through DEP, which really, no comment, while others has not involved DEP.
Could you speak to that a little bit for us?
Yeah, I think Mr. Groupon's correct. DEP does not have jurisdiction on saying where towns are allowed to provide sewers and not provide sewers, other than making sure it's consistent with the state's plan of conservation and development. You know, he did, when this was all starting, you know, he had us reach out to a couple of towns that we've worked with to see what their policies are. And some towns do let additional properties come in, and other towns, you know, one town in Lower Fairfield County, they hold fast as their line in the sand, because they feel that once they start increasing it, then you're going to get McMansions and everything else being developed, and that's what they're trying to avoid. So, I mean, as, as the purveyors of the sewer capacity, I think that's what the WPCA has to do, is decide where is our capacity best spent, and how do we want to allocate it?
Okay, so just to follow up, talking about the state conservation plan that you said they do care about, do you feel, having been an author of this plan, that if we allow this, we are still in, we're still conforming with the spirit?
Yeah, we looked at, you know, both the attorney and myself looked, because the map that we based this on expired unofficially in 2017, and there's a draft map proposed on DEP's website to be valid from 2018 to 2023. It hasn't been officially approved yet, but you're consistent with both maps.
Okay, okay. Mr. Pulis?
Now, that was my question, like, a map like this gets updated every five years? Or?
The state's plan of, the state's, their locational guide map, which is the roadmap for their plan of conservation and development, that gets updated every five years. I believe the town's plan is updated every 10 years, I believe.
But the sewer service area map that you're referring to is, this particular plan is a 20-year plan? It's a requirement to submit that every time you upgrade a plant. So, basically, this sewer shed, this sewer service area map could remain for the next 100 years if Southington doesn't upgrade its plant. But anytime you go for DEP funding, you have to modify or update the facilities plan.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question then. Based on that, I have a question. So, the plan prior to this, the one, you know, you said every 20 years or so, what was the sewer zone demarcation line then? Was it the same as what it is now?
It did show a sewer avoidance area. The issue is, this map shows parcel lines. As Lori said, DEP likes you to stay within parcels, don't go down the middle or partial. Back then, it was just street layouts with existing sewer lines and lines drawn on a map for the sewer avoidance. This area did show the parcel as being, I'll call it, the majority in the sewer avoidance area, the previous map.
Okay, any other questions?
Let's have one quick comment. John made a comment, so the apartments that are either built or approved downtown were approved, maybe not built, prior to 2015, which is the date on this map. That's all of Factory Square, it's all of Liberty Street, all of the Norfias on Liberty Street, and the condos that are next door diagonally across, so, I just wanted to point that out, because there's not another 400 apartments that weren't approved prior to 2015.
And I'm not sure exact amount of apartments, I know there's hundreds, I don't know if it's 400 or around there or what.
Yeah, it could be less.
Yep.
Could we get the lights back on, please, if we're done with this?
Is there any other, any other questions?
I'm just going to add one thing, and perhaps Mark could help with this. Mr. Ricchio made the comment that he hadn't seen anything like this before, and he's been involved quite some time. I'm under the impression, we've never done anything like this, that's probably why he never saw it. So, unless Mark has some historical memory that I don't have...
I would remember a meeting like this, no.
I don't, I don't think we've ever done anything like this, where applicant came and sent to the council.
To be specific, as Jim mentioned, we now have specific, since 2016, 15, we have specific lots on there. But as Mr. Ricchio mentioned before, we have, the streets that I'm familiar with, that we did sewer for, those are all within the sewer zone. So, I'm not aware of a subdivision that we extended sewers outside that area. Obviously, I could have staff check that, but I'm not aware of that.
I would like to know that, if we've ever had a request similar to this, where we're acting outside the sewer plan, to your recollection.
Certainly from 16, I don't recall it, but Jim talked about a map prior to that, that it would have been, they could double-check on that, but certainly since we've approved it in 16, there hasn't been anything like this.
Okay.
This is why the word precedent-setting came up so much in this dialogue. I said it when I gave my report, Lori said it when she was talking.
The town attorney, the town attorney said, we have wide latitude.
You do.
Wide latitude, which does not mean precedent-setting. Wide latitude and precedent-setting are almost...
Well, that's authoritative latitude, am I correct? You have authoritative latitude.
Mr. Bedard, can you just step back forward to the microphone and clarify that?
I'm sorry, I didn't go through the chat.
I would just argue that you have wide latitude to make a decision, and that decision may set a precedent. I don't think they're different things at all, they're not mutually exclusive. You have the discretion to do that, but what that means going forward, you know, time will tell, so.
But, Mr. Chairman, the precedent would be, if this body chose, after looking at each plan individually, it doesn't just automatically happen, a precedent doesn't, you know, so if this plan is approved, it doesn't automatically mean that we're going to approve the next plan, or the next plan, or the next plan. Each plan would be, this body would look at each plan independently and the impact. So, I mean, I want to really be careful about that, because it's like, well, we're just, you know, we're just robots, we're going to say yes to everybody. That's not true, and I have a great deal of faith in this, in this body to make, the ability to make that decision.
Well, can I just, and you can follow up, absolutely. Councilwoman Trina, you're not wrong, but we know, based on court cases, that once you show, give someone something, they have a stronger case when they go to court, and it is precedent-setting. And I understand what you're saying, technically, you're right, but when you look at the big picture, when you look at how it affects everyone, it is precedent-setting, in my opinion.
And that's exactly how I view it. I think you have a, and I'm not here to obviously dictate what decision is right or wrong, that's not my purview at all, but, you know, we have a plan of conservation and development, one of the policies within is to maintain the sewer avoidance areas. And if you look at some of the case law out there, that same condition exists, but for different reasons, of course, areas were either changed or denied, et cetera. And Councilman Berry, I think, put it well, it's once you deviate from policy, and the problem doesn't, isn't created then, it's if now someone else stepped forwards and wants you to deviate from policy and you decide not to, there may be a perfectly good reason not to, but there's also an argument that can be made that you're now somehow acting arbitrarily towards me, because you did it before. And it's a bit of an unknown. It's absolutely, again, I kept using that word, potential, it's a bit of an unknown, but the risk is, the risk is there.
So, that's why, and again, I was one of the votes on the sewer committee, that is why my motion and my vote was to recommend the application with the land swap, to distinguish the arbitrariness, is if every neighbor comes and wants to get included, if they don't have land to swap, it's not arbitrary to decline their application. So, we gave that great thought, and that's what the motion, if I was going to make a motion, that's what it would be, to approve the sewer committee's recommendation, not just accept this parcel.
So, can I ask, maybe, Mr. Hayden, can you talk about, Mr. Groupon, whoever, just talk about the trade in the land? Like, do you see equal value for the town in the new parcel that's being proposed as a trade-off to Mr. Dietzick's point?
The land that they're asking for the sewer for is such that it lends itself easily to a gravity sewer connection into the church. The property that they're offering to swap is considerably below the road by about 60 feet or more. So, that property would have to have a pump system to make it up to the road. So, I would say that's the two differences in the properties.
All right, so the property that they want to have an exemption for really wouldn't need any additional work, but the other piece of land would then require the town to put in a pump station if we decided to do anything in the future?
It would require the developer to put in a pump station. It would, it would cost them more money to develop that land, because they'd have to pump sewer up about 60 feet to the road. So...
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment? This is where I think this is, although I appreciate the facts, this is where I think it's a little bit inappropriate, because now we're looking at a map, and you're saying, well, this piece will cost the developer this much, this piece will cost the developer that much, that's irrelevant. What's relevant is the amount of water that goes into the sewer system. So, like I said before, the whole Welch Road, if we want to get it, analyze each piece of land, so the fact that the developer, ignoring money, he could certainly put a sewer system on one piece, the trade piece of land, and he can certainly put sewer, if approved, on this other piece. So, we should be analyzing the amount of water and flow, not how much it costs the developer. I have a problem with that.
Okay, and I'm not offering an opinion, I'm just trying to ask a question, but...
And I respond, I mean, Mr. Dietzick, so if I could just comment, Mr. Dietzick just made the point that that was why he suggested it the way he suggested, and I'm responding to what Mr. Dietzick said, Mr. Lombardi, so, there's nothing, all I'm doing is following up on his point.
Mr. Chairman, and I agree with you, and I agree with the thought process that Mr. Dietzick brought forward, but what I'm not agreeing with is the town engineer telling us how much it costs to bring the sewer line into one area or the other. We should be looking at it from an inflow to our sewer system, irregardless of what a developer has to pay to bring that water into us.
Could I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
The town, the attorney for the applicant said that the land that they're offering up is Zone 40, and the land that they're asking for is 80, so it's a two-to-one ratio. That is not entirely correct, because they're putting 32 units, where there would have been four.
Right.
An equivalent trade would have been eight, so it would have been eight to four. Now, it's eight to 32, so it's, the reverse is what it is, the flow is worse there. And I'm offering no opinion, I'm just trying to factually address your comment on the flow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, I don't mean to take much time. Precedent-setting is a valid concern, but sometimes it's also a convenient door to hide behind. So, if I take $12 out of my checking account and put it in my savings account, I still have $12. If I take 12 acres out of West Street and use it for 12 acres on Lanning Street, it's still 12 acres. It's a million dollars to put a pump station in, that property could build 255 HOD units. It's fourth, that's only $4,000 per unit to put a pump station in, so the affordability is not the issue. The developer can certainly... The developer can certainly accommodate that, if I'm being kind, okay? So that, the building is not an issue. We're offering that swap as a compromise, and Sir Ricchio, I appreciate what you said, and I did go there first, but Mr. Dietzick was correct. We looked at it and said, okay, well, all things being equal, okay? Again, not counting the open space we take out, not counting the actual land that's in yellow, that is actually to be developed, which includes cemeteries. So if we're looking at that, this is, this is really a non-issue. And I say that because simply, and I do disagree that, you know, this is a, with an 830G, you could put it on septic, but the charter's pretty clear, ordinance is pretty clear. It says in Section 345A, "New subsurface systems. The Director of Health," our Director of Health Sanitation, "shall not approve a new subsurface sewage disposal system," which is septic, okay? "in an area where public sewers are quote 'available' and the connection there to is feasible." It's available, it's right next door, it's feasible, because we have a means to do it, whether it's in the road or through the property. We just have this imaginary line, or this line that we don't want to move, ever, which means that you can never move this map, but this WPCA has the complete authority to do that. So we have this line. So we, we came before Dave Zoni's Subcommittee, because, you know, I anticipated the planning zoning to say, hey, wait a minute, or the town sanitary, wait, you got sewers right there, why aren't you connecting? Well, I have to go through this whole story. Well, here are the minutes, here are the reasons why, which is fine, a thumbs up or a thumbs down in this vote, you know, we're just doing what we have to do. We have to take these steps. We can't go to planning zoning first and then come back and say, please, you know, Sewer Committee, can you, you know, can you give us the sewers? We have the plan to go either way, just made more sense, dollars and cents with the neighbors as well as public health, so.
Check the HOD regulations, Attorney Macorillo, because the HOD regulations, Mr. Capone's right here, they require sewer service.
But HOD is for, this property's already out of that, because that's a 30-plus acre.
But isn't it the flooding zone you're going to use for, to get your ADG?
But with the state statute, with H-8-30G, a lot of those town, local regulations...
You would need to amend those local regulations, I'm thinking.
They go out, yeah, they go out the window, so.
But the point is, is that I just want to make sure, to make sure it's perfectly clear, our HOD regulations, which are put in for ADG applications, that specifically says it has to be on a sewer. You have the absolute right under ADG to modify that.
Yes.
But the answer to your question, when you said you're not required to do it, our current regulations require it. You would need to modify our current HOD regulation.
Well, first of all, well, we did, and the town, the town took our 80 properties out of the, out of the equation. So, but this property itself, 12 acres, wouldn't even meet the regulation, which of 30 acres.
That's my second part, is the fact that this needs 30 acres, so there's...
So we have 31 acres on West Street, which we're going to be proposing 255.
I understand, but what I'm saying to you is... Please let me talk.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is that when you say that it's ready to go for ADG, under HOD regulations, it's not. You need 30 acres to match that, you need to have sewer service. You have the absolute right to amend that, but you're not currently eligible to walk in there under an ADG based upon our current regulations.
State statute would, would give us the ability to do that.
Correct.
So, so this is not a, you can't do it if you don't get sewers. I want to clear that up, because that's not the case.
You could certainly amend it, but the current regulations aren't what you're saying they are, that's what I want to say.
Exactly, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to put this on the agenda for action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Berry?
We didn't have any discussion. The minority party wants to add it, I guess, okay, yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Paul Mary?
No. Okay, so that passes, it's added on the agenda under New Business Item C. I feel there was a lot of information tonight, and to now act on this tonight is a little premature, but it is on the agenda. Okay, so moving on, we have our next report, which is Open Space.
Let's see, we talked about parcel maintenance at our last Open Space meeting, and also the continuation of the planting of our new pollinator garden at Novick's Orchard, but the brunt of the meeting was an executive session. So if anyone has any questions, I'll take them, but again, it was sort of housekeeping, if you will, with regard to parcel maintenance and the pollinator garden.
Okay, are there any questions for Open Space? Okay, moving on, Property Tax Relief Committee, Chairman Boes is here, if you'd like to come up and give us your report. I'd like to also thank the members of that committee, Councilman Pulis, Councilman Dietzick, Councilwoman Morrissey, along with members of the Board of Finance, Suzoni and Tony Morrison, Terry Carmody representing the Board of Ed, and then two staff members, Janet Mellon and Teresa Babbin, and of course, Mr. Boes served as the Chair of that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. First and foremost, before I get into the summary, I appreciate the, your indulgence. Last meeting, I was booked for two meetings, one in Wallingford, where I work, where, surprising enough, we were talking about sewers. So I've had enough of sewers the last few weeks and the last few months, but anyway, I think, I thank you for rescheduling me. I too would like to thank the folks who are on the, who are on that committee. Great group of folks, three of them represented from the council here, Mr. Dietzick, Mr. Pulis, Pulis, if I got that right, and Ms. Morrissey, who I believe is not here, as well as Mrs. Zoni and Mr. Morrison from the BOF, and Mrs. Carmody from the Board of Education, as well as two ex-official members, Teresa Babbin, our assessor, who did a great job, did a lot of legwork for us, we appreciate that, and our Social Services Director, Janet Mellon. I'm sure you get a lot of questions from folks who say, you know, can I get some tax relief for this group or that group? And I know you're usually satisfied with the answer, or you should be, no, because state statute rules the day when it comes to the municipality's ability to reduce taxes at the local level. Most folks don't, don't know that. I know you folks probably do. But there's approximately two dozen state statutes which authorize municipalities to provide the benefits to qualifying residents. I'm sort of talking under the state authorization section of the, of the sheet that I just handed out. And the state, basically, the vehicle that they use to provide some relief at the local level is to reduce property assessment, the assessment on the, assess value on the parcels, to provide local property tax relief for senior citizens, military veterans, and those who may be disabled, such as receivers of the federal Social Security Disability Income Program. Those who might meet certain income limits, are of a certain age, and/or other criteria that are particular to that various state statute. And again, there's two dozen of them, so they, they vary quite a bit. Some of the statutes require a local authorization via the adoption of a town ordinance, some do not. It's merely the state passing a law that says the applicant can come to the assessor's office, apply for the benefit, and if he or she qualifies, is awarded the benefit. There used to be a time when several of these programs had some significant state reimbursement of the tax loss. Most of those have gone away. There's a couple of programs that we do offer here in Southington that still have a small amount of state reimbursement, but the big, the big amounts from the larger programs are, are gone. The current situation here in Southington, the committee with a lot of legwork by, again, Assessor Teresa Babbin summarized and reviewed the two dozen state statutes regarding these issues. As the town last performed a review of this nature approximately 12 years ago, from what we can determine by going back a little bit. Some good news is that the committee is very pleased to report that the town offers all two dozen programs to its residents. However, there are two town ordinances which may be revised, and a third, which we need to take another, I'll look at later, and I'll talk about that in a second, as these appear under the recommendations, which is on Side Two of that sheet that I just gave you. And of these two dozen state programs, Southington residents qualify and participate in 16 of them, which is a pretty good number, reducing their local property taxes by a total of approximately $850,000. But unfortunately, of this amount, only about $50,000 approximately is reimbursed on our Connecticut state funding law. So that's sort of where the, where we stand. The committee was quite happy to know that we were pretty much up on, up to snuff when it came to these programs. However, there were a couple of programs where certain variables were changed over the last few years. So we reviewed these programs, and they're on Page 2 of 2, the backside, and two actually that really stand out. The first one is State Statute 1281, Section F, Subsection A, which allows municipality to increase the present eligibility income caps to $67,200 for married individuals and $59,600 for single individuals, versus $43,900 and $36,000. And this allows an additional $10,000 in local property assessment exemption, which I think our mil rate's somewhere around 31, 31 mils, 32 mils, I believe, I forgot what the mil rate is, so that's about $310, $320 per person. While other eligibility criteria listed in State Statute 12-81 are still in effect for this program, it was only the income amounts that were increased. And for the, this to take effect, it would not happen automatically. The Town Council would have to amend Current Town Ordinance 375-8 to change these income levels. It doesn't have to be up to the maximum, by the way, it could be somewhere in between. The committee does, does come up with a recommendation to the council, and the committee voted to recommend the council not to enact any changes to the existing Town Ordinance 375-8 at this time. Quite a bit of discussion over it, but two factors, I think, won the day more than anything. The first is the state's, obviously, financial condition, not changing much, not getting much better that we can see, and its ramifications as far as state grant monies to the municipalities. We've lost several million dollars in grant funds over the last few years in other programs, and as many municipalities in Connecticut already have. That's the first issue. Also, the current income levels of $43,900 for married folks and $36,000 for single folks appear to be high enough to the committee members to reach the neediest of Southington residents, which is why our, our recommendation is to not enact any changes. And I'll continue to run down and address questions as anybody would like to pose them. The second is State Statute 12-81I, which provides a municipal option to provide up to an additional $1,000 assessment, that's not tax credit, assessment, for our Social Security qualified, totally disabled individuals who meet income limits of State Statute 12-81L, $16,000 for married and $14,000 for single. And this would require the council to adopt a new town ordinance, that's required by the state statute. The recommendation by the committee is to enact a town ordinance to offer this benefit. And the main reason is, is because, because of those income limits of $16,000 and $14,000, it seems to, it seems to address the, some of the needier people, that is really the target of what we're, we're trying to accomplish. Item recommendation number three, State Statute 12-129, Subsection N, provides homeowners age 65 and over, or those permanently disabled, certain assessment exemption, and I believe the amount is $10,000, which I forgot to put in there, with the option for the town to lean the property. You folks might remember that there was an effort to do that quite a while ago. Now, this state statute has something that's very, very strange, or very odd in it, and nobody on the committee, I did not know this, the assessor in Wallingford reports to me, but I did not know it in this detail, and we did not know this at all, anyone on the committee, was that, once the committee is formed, the committee has 60 days to make a recommendation to the body that's going to ultimately make the decision as to whether or not they're going to accept it and try to adopt an ordinance. We didn't really start our work till about a month after, maybe 30, 35 days after the committee was formed, mostly because of timing issues regarding personal matters that I had at hand. So we didn't really get a chance to, we didn't have the time to adopt, we thought, within 60 days, a recommendation to you folks. So we said to the, ourselves at the time, we are going to do what we can with all the other state statutes, other than this one, and if the council then wants to reappoint us, we will make sure that we meet that 60-day criteria and make a recommendation to the council at that time. So that's kind of where we are on that right now. There's no recommendation on that item number three.
And that's where, that's where the reappointment comes back in later in the agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
If the council chooses to go that direction.
Okay, thank you.
And item number four, doesn't have anything to do with a state statute, per se, but through our discussions, especially Janet Mellon was, was pretty important in this portion of it, and other members said that many citizens are not aware of certain, that some of these benefits may be available to them. Certain veterans don't know, and certain senior citizens may not know. This is just what Janet brought to us in, in discussing many of her clients that come to see her on a, on a very current basis. So, anyway, the committee recommended that the, the town conducts some type of an awareness initiative, or educational plan, or whatever you want to call it. I'm an accountant, we're not that creative, so, there's other folks that could probably come up with a better deal, to make the public aware that some of these benefits are there, and how to go about seeking the information to apply. And that, that's probably going to involve, we recommended, and I spoke to these people as well, our Veterans Affairs Coordinator and our Senior Citizens Director as well, Mr. Verderam. So I've spoken to them, sort of off the record, if you will. And of course, Janet Mellon, to, to reach potentially eligible residents and, and provide them with this information, so that maybe, we want to make sure we're trying to reach as many people who, who, we like to reach everybody who may be eligible, whether they are or not, that remains to be seen based upon their application, so. With that, I tried to summarize the best we could, or I could, for the, the committee's efforts to maybe address the issues that you can address, but I think the good news is, is that Southington is doing a very good job in what it offers the folks that we are allowed to offer these benefits to, with those two real exceptions. So with that, I will try to answer questions. Our, our assessor cannot be here tonight, so if there's anything detailed, I certainly will get back to you, one of us will.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, thank you so much for putting this all together and working so hard on it. I really do appreciate it. I do agree that education is so important in this area, and even as we talked about our community services, our senior center, and a few, the veterans, I think that it could even be expanded to clergy people who would know a little bit more about it, because sometimes we are the first one who hears the, the problem. So I would encourage you all to kind of get a, an educational program going and, and get it out there so that those that are stakeholders in this community, community would know what's available and be able to recommend it as individuals come in, into their lives and stuff. I think, Mr. Chairman, thank you, that I think this is a very, very comprehensive assessment of the, of the, the things that we offer here in town.
And, you know, I want to emphasize again, at the beginning, at the formation of the committee, we all hear every, every budget cycle, how people are not necessarily imposed to some of the service, opposed to some of the services that we offer, but they're on fixed income, they can't afford some of these things, so this really offers assistance to residents in town that are in need. So I really appreciate the work of you and your committee, and, and thank you for bringing this to us.
The committee members, and I also heard from a, a couple of folks throughout the... The committee members, and I also heard from a couple of folks throughout the process as well, so we told them that we hear you, but we cannot recommend something that the council cannot grant, or cannot write an ordinance for. It is state statute propagated, and that's important for folks to know as well.
Right. Mr. Dizik, and then Mr. Pulis.
Briefly, my recollection, and just to bolster what Ms. Tran said, is that 12-129N, which is the lien tax relief, which is, in my opinion, is the best one, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are zero people who are taking advantage of it?
That's, it did not, it was, I believe, the council, and please correct me if I'm wrong, maybe Mr. Shoda or somebody, I believe the council, the council's ordinance, or proposed ordinance, recommended no lien. That was petitioned and defeated at referendum, which I don't know what conclusions folks would like to draw from that. The only one that I can draw is that the folks who came out and voted that day preferred a lien. Now, I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's just my interpretation.
But I'm correct that there's zero people are availing themselves of that tax relief?
That's correct, because it's not on the books here in Southington yet, because it died at ballot referendum. However, if I may, there's a, I kind of skipped over this just for brevity, the town does, and I think folks out there should know who are watching this on TV or are here tonight in the audience, the town does offer two parallel programs that the statutes allow, 12-170AA and 12-170V. Hate to bother you with all these statute references, but they're important, because sometimes they differ a little bit here and there. The primary difference between those two and 129N is the age. Currently, we have on the books, those two that I just mentioned, that I just referenced, that start at age 70, per state statute. This 129N, one of the differences, and it's the major difference, brings it down to age 65 for potential eligibility. And that is not on the books in Southington, because it was defeated at petition. If I remember that correctly, if I'm not, please correct me.
Was that a referendum?
Yeah. What happens is when you have an ordinance, you have so many days under our charter to petition a referendum, and then, in this case, that ordinance was defeated.
Couple of the committee members, several of the committee members actually remember it. I don't remember the year that they said, and I was just looking frantically through my notes for it, and I don't have it here, but it was defeated at the petition, I call it a petition referendum, I don't know, that's probably not the right legal term, but...
It was in the last 10 years.
Yeah, yes, it was. I believe it was, well, I'm going to say the early, the middle 2000s to the 2010-ish era, something like that.
Mr. Pulis.
Yeah, I just wanted, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to state on the record that when we looked at the tax, the income limits for the veterans, we are a leader in the state in terms of where, the height, the level of our limits, they're very high. We take care of our vets, and that was a pleasant discovery to find when we were doing our research on this, that we're already a step ahead of most communities in terms of taking care of the vets.
Yeah, that was, that was a good revelation. A lot of, I would say almost everything that came out of the committee's meetings, discussions, and the work, a lot, like I said, I can't commend Teresa Baban enough, she's, she did the mules work on this. And I discussed it with our assessor and several other assessors I know throughout the state, and it's a good process to go through, but it was really, I was glad to know that we were doing everything we could, with a couple of very small exceptions. So, we have to tackle 129N, if the council wishes us to, and if you wish to, if you form us tonight, we will have something to you within 60 days, even if we have to do it while we're on vacation via telephone.
Any other questions for Mr. Boz? Okay, again, it is on for action later on tonight for your committee. Thank you very much, we appreciate your work.
Would you like me to stay for that, or?
It's up to you, but we do plan on, it is on the agenda.
Snip and tuck whether you'll be appointed or not.
Are we all stuck on the committee again, is that what I'm asking? I guess it is. We also, also, the committee members, we do thank the council for their support, and on a personal note, I thank the nine of you, and past and present council members for running this town in a very, very responsible way. I give you folks a lot of credit, and thank you for all you do for the town. Thanks, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to Town Manager's Report, so we'll start with pavement management.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is pavement management. Some of you have been on the council for a while, realize that it's been about seven or eight years since we did our professional pavement management plan. As you know, as part of our capital plan, starting next year and then running approximately three, four, or five years each time, we'll be going to referendums for approximately $10 million for our roads, to keep our road projects going. Working very closely with our Superintendent of Highway and Parks, Mrs. Turnquist, we are going to recommend to you that we move forward with hiring a pavement management contractor, and I want Annette to explain why, and I know the question always comes in, I know that I've received questions from three separate council people, why we can't do this internally, and there's a very good reason for it, not only, obviously, staff time and resources, but to get the product we're going to need to do this road management project over the next 10 or 12 years, we're going to need to do this. So, Mr. Turnquist, if you could come and explain the process?
Good evening. I'm Annette Turnquist, I'm the Superintendent of Highway Parks. I just want to explain the process a little bit. We met with three companies. Two of them had very similar processes, one which we felt stood out was StreetScan. The technology they had was far superior over the other two. They basically have vehicles that are equipped with cameras, 3D cameras, optical devices, and their cameras are close to the road surface, and they're pointed down at the road surface. So they basically drive through town, they cover every mile of road, and the picture is right, they take a video, the picture is right up there along every mile of road. They have a sophisticated program which gets rid of the shadows or anything like that, and they evaluate it with this program. And let me just say, the other two companies basically use, it's kind of like a cellphone mounted to a dashboard, I mean, it's more sophisticated than that, but it's further away from the road surface. And then the other thing that made this company stand out was the program that they used to analyze it. Basically, it's a non-biased analysis, and it covers every inch of the road. And then you're able to manipulate it depending on what the town wants to do. If you have a set amount of money, you can put it in there, and it'll tell you basically how to get the biggest bang for your buck. Or if you're looking to improve the roads a certain amount, it'll tell you how much money you need. You can put in different kinds of treatments if you want, and it tells you how it affects the budget, how it will improve the overall roads. As you know, the engineering department has been doing this for a few years, but clearly, you know, the town doesn't have this sophisticated equipment. Not to say what they're doing is wrong or inaccurate in any way, they use their professional judgment, it's perfectly sound and good judgment, but it involves someone basically walking the roads, which you can imagine is very time-consuming, and you can't cover every little section of road. So I think that this system is more thorough, it's more accurate, and again, it gives you a non-biased rating system so that when residents call and ask, where are we on the list, why are we there on the list, when do you think we'll get there, it just gives us better information to give to the residents and more reason behind what we're doing. Other than that, are there any questions?
Just before, for any questions, the reason why is, of course, is that, as you know, when we go to the public next year, I want to be able to explain, and I'm sure the Public Works Committee and the Town Council want to explain to the public, that we're ready. If the public is generous enough to approve the referendum, we're ready to move forward, here are our plans, here is all the documentation, here's why we're doing this particular road this particular way, and it gets all the guesswork out of it, because it's always the same, you know, it's very difficult when you have staff members rating it, and I know that they do a great job in most cases, but they only have the tools that we give them, and we do not have, and nor would I purchase, for one particular situation, this particular technology, it's cheaper to do it this way. But I do think that for us to be able to sell these continuing referendums over the next, you know, 10-odd years to get our roads up to speed, we do need this plan in place. So we're recommending it tonight, obviously, it's new to the council, that's why the chairman and I didn't put on for action. It's up to you whether you want to do that, or just wait till August, we can do either one, it's up to you guys. So any questions, certainly, Annette and I can answer any questions that you have.
How often do most municipalities take between these types of studies? Because I know ours has been seven years?
Seven or eight years, yeah.
Seven or eight years, so how long do most municipalities, through your colleagues in other towns?
We actually asked all three of the consultants we met with that, and it's three, five years.
So we're beyond?
We are, and another thing that that program does is, as you do your construction each year, you can enter that into the system, and it updates the rating of the road. So you don't necessarily have to inspect the roads every year, because you're putting in what you did, and there's not going to be that great a change from year to year, but, in a nutshell, three to five years.
Mr. Chair. So I'm curious, is it still a rating system of letters, the way the current system is?
The engineering system?
Yes, this new pavement management plan, because we were rating our roads.
I believe they're numbers.
They're numbers. What the current system does is, it puts the roads into five categories.
Right.
And within those categories, they rate them from 10 to 1, 10 being the highest priority, down to 1. What this one does is it gives, it's on a 1 to 100 scale, basically, so it's a little more fine-tuned, instead of only having 10, you're on a 100 scale, so it prioritizes them a little better, rather than categorizing them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, just curious if it worked the same.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, trash and recycling bids?
The next item is the, on for action for you tonight, Mr. Chairman, is the action for trash and recycling bids. You have it in front of you. Once again, I thank the Superintendent of Highways for coordinating this. I think it went very well. All the companies have been notified that if they wish to take their assignments, they will. We did have a situation where we had a Southington company take over a bid, because it was in the 10%, and you'll see that in your narrative, so happy to answer any questions that you have on that. No questions? Then the last item I have tonight is for the playscape, which I know you've heard a lot about. This is going to be at Memorial Park, and the vice chair has been coordinating this with a couple of clubs, along with, I believe, Reverend Triano also. With this particular case, what we're doing is we're recommending the company Grasshopper Lawns, Inc., out of Nogatuck. There was a little issue about our budget versus what we were able to, it was a little higher than our budget, so I looked at it very closely, and our recommendation, I believe, was a $10 million insurance policy, and I felt that, from administrative standpoint, I could reduce that to $5 million, since it's, the issue is a very, it's a relatively small project, a $25,000 project, and doing that, they were able to reduce their exposure and therefore get in within our numbers. So I know that Annette, obviously, is recommending them, she interviewed them, and we're looking forward to your action tonight. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Just to be perfectly transparent, I am a member of Rotary, although I'm not necessarily in the hands-to-hands kind of everyday thing about the Rotary Park that we're hoping that will be with us very soon and provide a lot of fun for kids. But I'm going to step back from voting on this, Mr. Chairman, because I am a Rotarian, and I feel that it should just go through the council.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just one. One of the great things is that it looks as though we will be able to do, the entire playscape is going to be all abilities, as we have said from day one, but we were also approached about doing a special handicap component that can be pretty pricey, and we're able to get it with this current plan. So I can't really speak to it more, other than you actually go onto the piece of equipment with a wheelchair, and several can fit on there, and I'm not sure if it spins around, or I don't have all the specifics in front of me, but...
That was recommended, then we looked at it, and we put it in as an alternate, and it just so happens, the way the bids came in, we were able to do all their alternates. So to confirm what the vice chair just said, we were able to do all our alternates and stay up budget.
And we do have someone from Rotary in the office, in the audience this evening, I see Joanne Alferey, who has been critical to this project from day one. So, again, thank you to Rotary, who was spearheading this project, with just a little bit of financial help as well, from Community Foundation of Greater New Britain.
Thank you again to Rotary, if you can pass along our appreciation, we really appreciate I believe that concludes...
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Can I ask one question of the town manager through you? Circling back to the trash bids, the trash and recycling bids, what's the term of those contracts, is that a...
They're three-year terms.
Three-year, that's what I thought, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the town manager? Okay, moving on to the town attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to not report anything tonight. Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to public communication. This is the time to allow residents to come and speak, the microphone is open. We ask that residents limit their comments to five minutes, and just begin by stating their name and address for the record.
Thank you, Karen Leary, 244 Hart Street. I am the chairperson of the Commission on Disabilities, and I would just like to say that I was not able to be present at the June 24th Town Council meeting where we heard, everyone heard about many questions and presentations regarding the public transportation, but I was able to review the minutes, and I certainly respect and appreciate the Town Council's need for additional information. However, I would like to state that the Commission for Persons with Disabilities strongly urges the Town Council to support the need for a fixed bus route in Southington, which would also provide access to paratransit for our residents in Southington who need and desire those services. In sum, we urge the Town Council to say yes to Councilman Riccio's earlier proposed question to his fellow council members, where he posed the question, does the council want busing in Southington? That really is the big question, and we would urge you to answer in the affirmative, and to say yes to that question. We do need that. There is a need, and our residents with disabilities have a right to access to the public transportation services that are available in communities that surround Southington and are in existence across the state of Connecticut. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. George Mahorley, 1297 East Street, member of the Southington Commission on Disabilities, as well as the Southington for Transportation Group, and I won't repeat everything Karen said, she said it very well, I agree with her 100%. Certainly, a lot of questions have come up, we urge you to move forward. Microtransit has come up, and I've immersed myself in the topic over the last couple of weeks since I first heard the term, gladly answer any of the questions. It's being done in Norwalk right now, and they've got some interesting numbers out in Norwalk, and it's not a perfect solution, but it does have some intriguing things. I'd like to ask Sherri Tabor to come up and speak, you know, she, an ex-resident who has interesting insight into the issue.
Hello.
Hi. I just want to say, I really loved living in Southington. My family lived in Southington for over 25 years. Sorry, I'm nervous. Both my children spent their school careers from preschool to high school here in town. We were invested in Southington through town ball, fundraising, volunteering, enjoying many community programs. Over the years, I've been to several, sorry, bus meetings, and always the same story. It's an election year, or people in town just don't want low-income folks coming in. Southington has many supports for our residents, but what the town needs to understand is people with disabilities need the same consideration. By bringing the bus system to town, you will provide a vital lifeline for people with disabilities, which would give them access to employment, education, healthcare, and community life. Also, the ability to use the parabus, which is a door-to-door transportation, and not having the bus system in town, this denies those citizens for a full life. After a heartfelt discussion with my family, we felt it was the best interest to leave Southington. Let me explain why. My oldest son, Kane... My oldest son Kane is on the autism spectrum disorder. He turned 30 this year. And as a parent, I need to look towards his future, which includes access to public transportation. This will give him opportunity for independence, the ability to get you a job, healthcare, shopping, meeting friends at the movies, and getting involved in community programs. Just imagine if you were disabled, or your child, and not having the ability for independence. And not have the ability to get to places on your own. That would limit your personal growth and lessen your self-worth. By moving only 10 minutes away to Plainville, my son Kane's world has opened up. He has the ability to get home from work independently. He will begin bus training this month. Kane said to me, with a big smile on his face, "Mom, I can go to the grocery store And as a mother, that just brought tears to my eyes. By accessing public transportation, this will create opportunity for socializing, jobs, and community involvement. Kane will build organizational skills, self-confidence, and be independent. Bringing the public transportation to town is not just allowing somebody to get place to place, it's about independence, socializing, organization skills. So please consider helping our disabled citizens and giving them the opportunity to become the best they can be. Many people feel that possibly the senior bus would work out. But it's limited, and limited on space and availability. And also, people have considered using Uber and Lyft. But if you consider, from where I used to live, 12 Flanders Street, to where my son works on Main Street in Glastonbury, it would cost him $23 one way. And he works a minimum wage job four hours a day. So he would be paying more to get there than he actually earns. For some of our folks, they may not have a cellphone or the ability to navigate and Uber safely. For parents with disabled children, as we age, who will take them to their appointments, to their jobs? So when we're gone, will our children be isolated? Thank you.
Good evening. Judy Robarge, 11 Fox Run, Southington. I'm here in support of the return of bus service to Southington and Plansville. Not everyone has a driver's license. Some people will never be able to have a driver's license. There are some people who will never have a smartphone, or a cellphone, or a credit card. So there's no way they can access Uber or Lyft for their transportation. By bringing bus service back to Southington and Plansville, it also enables para-transport to be part of our community for the disabled, or the elderly, or anyone who qualifies and needs some specialized transportation. So I ask you, when you consider all these things as the Town Council, to, and make this decision, that you consider all these things that will impact all of us who reside here in Southington and Plansville. I would like to introduce to you Bryce Wyler, who has a connection to Southington. And he has a couple of things that he liked to say that has impacted him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bryce Wyler. A pleasure to be here with you this evening. I do playing on the field programs with the New Britain Bees baseball team. And I think that putting the bus routes into Southington would not only help individuals who may have special challenges, like people who might be blind, deaf, having autism, individuals who are in a wheelchair, but also people who might not be able to afford to take a car to get to work. Or walking might be hard for them, but they might not, you know, have something that can help them get the specialized bus service for someone who might be blind or deaf or having autism. So it would bring to the town more people who may not otherwise be able to live in this town. And it would also give everyone the fairness for which he or she is guaranteed by law. Now, we said the pledge and we had a prayer before we began our chats of sewers and the other things on the schedule. And in the pledge, it talks about justice for everyone. Justice just isn't for the people who can drive wherever they feel like going on a warm sunny day. But it's for those individuals who may not be able to drive because they cannot see, or may not be able to drive because they cannot set up vans to get their wheelchair in, or things of that nature. Now, I do these programs a lot with sports teams, with Baltimore's baseball team in Camden Yards, and with the Rockies in Colorado. And the owners of their teams also have lots of money, just like cities have lots of money. And we often have discussions about, is there a certain number of people who you need? Is five enough? Or does it have to be 505? But if you have one, or two, or three, that's, that is three people who need your help, three people who want to get to wherever they want to be able to go, so they can enjoy whatever makes them happy, whether it's playing on the field with the New Britain Bees, going out to the park to listen to the music in New Britain. People can't get to all these places when they're here in your town now, because the buses do not run from your town. So instead of bringing people in, people are leaving. And that can be rather hard. So those are my thoughts on the matter. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, 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 hello. My, my name is, is Donna Brollard.
Thank you.
Donna asked me to read?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Yes. Because, because, because I have, I have a speech problem.
No, no problem. Thank you. Absolutely.
Which, which is actually, which is, which is, which is actually caused, caused by, caused by my neurological disability.
Okay. So this is her phone, and I'm reading this. Okay. Hello, my name is Donna Brollard. I've been a Southington resident for over 30 years. My life is similar to that of most of my peers. I rent my own apartment. I'm responsible for my own finances. I do my own shopping. I have held my current job for over 18 years. I do my own cooking. So in other words, I'm quite independent. However, there's one area of my life that I'm independent to deep regret. I've had a neurological condition since birth that not only hinders my ability to speak, it also denies me the freedom to drive myself to and fro, which has certainly, which certainly has a profound effect on my lifestyle. When the weather permits, I must walk over a mile to get to work, considerably farther if I need to run errands downtown. Thankfully, I have friends and family who are willing to drive me from time to time. However, I try not to make too much of a habit of doing so, for they have commitments of their own, and I wouldn't want to be a burden on them. In our town, if our town were to acquire a bus line, it would not only allow me to enhance my independence, it would also allow those with my level of disability, and those who are more severe, who wouldn't have the option of walking at all, who reside in our lovely town, to have a means of transportation available to them, so they could become more self-reliant and have a newfound sense of freedom to go to work, to a movie, or visit a friend. No matter what our abilities are, we all deserve the right of independence. And if this town would provide a bus line, that ideal could be achieved. Thank you very much, Donna.
Mr. Chairman, Donna wrote me a note also. I'd like to read it into the record if I can.
Sure, absolutely.
It says, "Hello, Councilwoman Triano, I didn't mention it before, but I do have an Uber account. I'm able to use it without a problem. However, it's sort of expensive to use on a daily basis. And the only way to arrange a ride is through, through an app. Though I'm fortunate enough to have a smartphone equipped with the app, many people with disabilities may not. Because let's face it, disability benefits do not pay much. Also, Uber would not be good, a good option for someone in a wheelchair, because unless the Uber driver has a van with a wheelchair lift, the driver probably wouldn't be able to take them. I'm planning on attending tonight's Town Council meeting." Thank you, Donna, for writing.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think, I think, I think, I think, I think you, I think you, and I'm, and, and I, 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 and I feel honored, honored to, I feel honored to have had, to have, to have had this opportunity to come here tonight and to, and, 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 and to, and to allow, and to, and to have allowed my, my, my voice to be heard.
Absolutely, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
We appreciate it. Ms. Chiro.
Nancy Chiro, 330 Annalee Avenue, Southington. I just want to say, thank you for listening to all this again tonight. I know you have a decision to make. Mike, I'm sorry I missed the very beginning of the meeting, but I heard that you said, "Let's take a vote." I don't know when that vote will happen. I know our number one priority for this bus line to come through town has been for paratransit and to, you know, have that opportunity for our disabled. But if you have an, if, there's so much right now with the DOT, and they have no answers, and we don't have answers, you don't have answers. But if you can just move forward, maybe ask them to consider, just go back with Phase 1, while the money's there, while the, while the opportunity is there to bring that bus at least to Bob's Plaza, we can, that's a start. And then you can ask perhaps the state to research and look at bus stops. And, and have the input, like John said, like Councilman Barry said last week, that you can talk to our chief of police and say, "Make sure that they're not in front of people's houses. Make sure that they're here, there, and everywhere." It should take 15 minutes to have that discussion. It shouldn't take 18 months and $2 million, you know, as was indicated, to have that discussion of where these might be, and then you can approve that. If you say yes, let's, let's go forward with this. And by the time the DOT gets the money, makes the decisions, could be 18 months to two years from now, and if we, if you didn't like it, and it was a terrible thing, you could say, "Hold on, we decided we don't want it," before the bus gets put in. At least move forward with it. Don't let this just sit. Don't say no. You have the ability to impact so many lives, so many lives. Nine people could affect so many lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? The microphone is still open. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, I'll close public communication, which means we're moving on to old business. First item tonight is action on the trash and recycling bids.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just glad to see that our preferred bidding ordinance proved to be effective in this particular item as well. That's all.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes. Item B, action on memorial playscape bids.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the company outlined in our packet for, packet for the memorial playscape bid contractor.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
One abstention.
And one abstention. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is a little bit out of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider our motion to add to the agenda, the issue of sewer. I think we have the ability, based on Robert's rules, to, since I was on the prevailing side of that motion, I would like to redo that vote. And I was a little caught off guard by, by the motion. I don't think we should act on it tonight. I think there's a lot of impact that has to be considered. I think we should review it. We have a month to look at this. I think there are properties that could be impacted by a vote on this so quickly. There was a lot of information to digest. So I'm not quite sure how actually I, I actually say the motion, but I am going to reconsider that motion to add it to the agenda, and I'd like to revote that. And I do believe under Robert's rules, I had that option since I was on the prevailing side.
If the town attorney can weigh in, otherwise, I guess we can make a motion to table it. But...
I'd like to see it in Robert's rules. I've never, ever...
Yeah, you can, it's a motion to reconsider.
Can somebody show that to us, please?
I have heard that. I don't know off the top of my head. I could consult the rules.
Okay, so would, would a motion to table accomplish the same thing?
It would, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to what, excuse me?
Would a motion to table accomplish the same thing?
When you get to that point in the agenda.
When we get to that point in the agenda. Okay, so we're, we're back to...
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order regarding an individual of the Town Council that should recuse, should be recused for this matter and this vote.
Mr. Macarillo, Attorney Macarillo, we're, we're actually voting on tax refunds right now? And then we're doing appointments, and then we'll get to...
I'll bring it back.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion for tax refunds?
I'll make the motion to approve the tax refunds. Itemized at Town Council.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the tax refunds. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes. Appointments, Property Tax Relief Committee. I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Jim Bose as chairman, Councilman Pulis, Councilman Dietzick, Councilwoman Morrissey, Suzoni, Toni Morrison, Terry Carmody, Janet Mellon, and Teresa Babbin, to complete the work that they started.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I also have a question for...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Thank you. If the committee comes back and recommends that we allow tax relief with or without liens on homes, does that then go to referendum again?
No. What happens is it goes to, it goes to ordinance. The town attorney, along with the director of revenue, would write up an ordinance for this council to review. This council would then go to a public hearing. If it was approved, then under the charter, if a resident wishes to, under the procedure set forth in our charter, petition to get a referendum to challenge that ordinance. But it goes to, it has to go that way.
It was a petition that did it?
Yep. There's, under the section of the charter, that within a certain period of time after an ordinance has been approved by the council, outside of the budget, it's not financial stuff. But, yeah, it could be challenged.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank this committee. I thought this document was very well put together with all, with all the documents that we see. I do want to thank them for, for doing this work.
Jim Bose is somewhat precise.
He's outside, I can see him through the window, so he's still in the building.
Yep. And, and what we'll do is, once they're reappointed, and again, it was a state statute that limited their, their scope of the work, they'll come back before us and we can take action on that. All right, so we have a motion to reappoint and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Dietzick and Mr. Pulis and Mr. Bose in the hallway. Moving on to Zoning Board of Appeals alternate.
Mr. Chair, I'll make it a point, oh, I can't talk tonight. I make a motion to appoint Christina Volpe of 161 Oakland Road as the zoning board of appeals alternate.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a five-minute recess.
We are in recess.
We had a quick caucus. Appreciate the patience. And I think Dawn has a motion to add something to the agenda, if we can entertain that.
I do. I do. It's too bad that Nancy Chiro and George left. But in light of everything that we heard here tonight, and we have had lots of emails and lots of conversations on this, I appreciate Mr. Palmieri, by the way, putting this on the agenda for the first time in my tenure history on the council. We would like to add, as Mr. Ricchio said, "Let's add the busway, yea or nay from this council, to the agenda this evening."
Yes, and I second that. And I want to also commend Mr. Palmieri because this has been a very controversial issue for years. He had the leadership and the ability to bring it up to the council. We had an extensive discussion about it. We had public input. It's about time that we just vote this. This has been percolating for years. I commend the leadership of the council, both the chairman and the vice chairman, for, for even having the discussion. And I think we've heard a lot over the years, we've heard a lot over the last several months. So I do also make that, I second that motion to add to the agenda.
Okay, so that will be added as new business item D. We have a motion and a second, so discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm so happy that you're doing that. And, you know, it was, you know, Mike had brought it up at the very beginning that it's time and I agree. And so let's just do this and, and vote it. We've heard it over and over again, we're the governing, the highest governing body in the town. Let's handle it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to add to new business item D, the bus route. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that is added to the agenda. Okay, so now we are at new business item C, which is the sewer committee issue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to table this item. Came, a little caught off guard that we're going to act on something so important so quickly with very limited ability to look over it over the next, to the next meeting. So I make a motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So at, at this point, just because it's a motion to table, there's no discussion, so...
A point of order in terms of qualifications to vote on even a motion to table.
Go ahead.
I have communicated with the town attorney, sent a letter, got a reply letter, sent another letter back outlining the basis for the recusal of a town council member that needs to be taken up. Either an executive session, which I've offered first, then be willing to have this council do that as a whole, as a body, or at least on the record to preserve my client's rights regarding the votes that are being, that would be cast tonight. There's already a vote to move it and I, and I should have stepped up at that point to move it from committee discussions to new business.
Okay.
I'm not sure how, Mr. Chairman, you'd like me to handle that?
Sure.
I'd like to be as delicate as possible, but I also like to.
So Attorney Macarillo, I'll turn it over to the town attorney because I know she received your request and I'll turn it over to the town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Macarillo is right. He did write a letter with respect to what he perceives as a potential conflict. We had a couple discussions today. I did speak to the council member, reviewed the facts stated in both letters. Based on my review of the points set forth by Attorney Macarillo, I do not believe there is a conflict of interest. A conflict of interest has a very specific meaning under Suddington Town Code. A personal interest is defined as an interest in any action taken by the municipality in which an individual will derive a non-financial benefit or detriment which will result in the expenditure of municipal funds. So, so based on all the discussions I had, the letters, I am of the opinion that there is no conflict of interest and if Attorney Macarillo wants to add anything back to that...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting there's any financial conflict. The non-financial, as you mentioned.
Correct.
Is a personal interest based on personal conversations, based on personal statements made toward, made about the applicant. I'm struggling here because I'm, I'm trying to be decent. However, I don't think my client, my role as counsel for him requires that I be decent, but in deference and just in decorum of this board. It's not fair to appear before anybody judicial, legislative, when there's a bias on that side of the bench. And that bias needs to be addressed. That bias needs to be, first of all, recognized and then addressed. So someone cannot be impartial and unbiased. Based on the statements that were made to me and I, and I shared with you, Attorney Futter, in my letter, which I asked that it be made part of the record rather than just read it verbatim. But, you know, it's clear, I see there's a head count. I see there's four Republicans, I see there's four Democrats, one Democrat's not going to be here tonight. I'm not taking advantage of the head count. This was brought up before anybody knew that councilperson Morrissey was not going to be here tonight. It's in fairness to my client that it's addressed and I, again, I urge maybe it should be done in executive session because of the nature of, of the statements that were made. And I don't want to go there any further unless, unless.
So, so again, I'll turn to the town attorney. You, you, you shared your response with the town attorney?
Writing.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to the town attorney. Do you feel there's a conflict? You feel, what are the next steps for?
No, I'm standing by that and just specifically to address the issue, Mr. Chairman, of executive session. The Freedom of Information Act, as you know, has four, five very specific outlined reasons to have an executive session. It's pending litigation, employment matters, things of that nature. We don't have that before us, so I don't believe it's proper at this point to have an executive session because there is no issue.
I'm not going to talk legal, but I'll talk protocol. Protocol is always that, that when there's a claim made, it goes to the town attorney. The town attorney notifies the person it's made against and responds based upon the, the facts that are there. In this particular case, protocol has been met. If the person sitting feels there's no conflict of interest, the town attorney feels there's no conflict of interest, it's on the record there's no conflict of interest. Attorney Macarillo's letter will be put into the record. There really isn't much more to go at this point. This isn't a debate session. We have a town attorney whose job is to rule whether there's a conflict of interest or not. Under our code of ordinances, the you or anybody else elected or appointed officials can rely upon that if and when, you know, if it goes to the next step, which he has the right to do, they, you have a right to rely on the town attorney's opinion. That's what, that was done. So protocol is, is met here. If the person who, that you're talking about feels there's no conflict of interest and that person wants to sit and vote, the town attorney has stated based upon all the facts that are here, that she has, she rules there's no conflict of interest and all protocols have been met.
Okay.
And in that, then Mark, what, what recourse then does, does Attorney Macarillo have?
Well, I'm not going to talk about what could happen in the future, but obviously depending on a, on a vote.
I'm saying if we vote and whoever that is votes based upon Attorney Futter's assessment, then does the, does the petitioning party have recourse? Because if we're all going to vote on something that we don't know about and we can't make the determination, it's very, very difficult for us to go ahead and vote on something when we don't even, we don't know if there, there is a conflict or not. I understand Attorney Futter has made her decision, but is this just going to go on? I mean, I don't know. I just, I just don't know if.
I'm just, I'm just talking how the protocol works.
Okay.
To answer your question, if, if a vote takes place that Mr. Macarillo or his client is not satisfied with, can it be used further on that? Of course, that's his right to do. But protocols have been met. A complaint has been put in, a complaint has been set to the town attorney, the town attorney researched that and has notified both the person that the complaint was against as well as the person making the claim. I'm not saying anything more than that. From a legal standpoint, protocol's been met.
Okay.
So my, my question is, it would be proper then for the individual to explain why there is no personal conflict. A legal opinion's one thing. It's a factual basis that I laid out. And, and it would be a decent thing, be the proper thing for someone to say no. And here's why I don't believe I should recuse myself from comment or vote, which is what the.
Well, I would think that would be the case if the town attorney thought there may be a conflict of interest, but, but again, the town attorney is, is neutral and making an opinion and a ruling. So the ruling was made, so I, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't know legally what.
I don't think there's any obligation at this point for any further clarification. We've, we've gone through the process. There's nothing more to be said. I, I think if the individual were going to recuse themselves, then an explanation would be in order under the rules, but there's no affirmative, affirmative obligation to say why you're remaining on the panel.
Okay. So as, as the town manager pointed out, there is, you could, there is recourse, but as far as tonight, it, it sounds like what the town attorney is saying is that, that there's, there's nothing more at this point for tonight.
And the silliness of this is what, and attorney showed us correct, that there's recourse. Assuming, I don't know which way this vote's going to happen, assuming it's, it's not in favor or it's even Steven, it's neutral because you've got eight members here. That bias, that, that impartiality will be looked at by a court, by a judge, and it would be then assessed whether that bias was something that would disqualify a certain town council member from voting. It, it's going to happen afterwards. It potentially could happen afterwards. So, so whether there's not a protocol to do that tonight, the, the right thing or the decent thing would be to state on the record why there's not, regardless of how that individual's going to vote. But if that's not going to happen, that, that's fine. I needed to preserve my client's rights. I needed to put this on the record. Attorney Futter, thank you for responding to my letter and then receiving my letter today and then talking to me afterwards. So that will be part of the record as well. I just wanted to make that clear. Obviously, it's an obligation I have to my client, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have before us a motion to table. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Lombardi?
No.
Ms. Ali?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes, to table.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
No.
Palmieri?
Yes. So the motion fails on a 4-4 vote. Okay, so.
Well, I was going to entertain a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider must be made by a person who voted on the prevailing side. That means who was on the side that won the motion. I was on the side to add it to the agenda. After reconsideration, I think it was pretty premature to act on it so quickly after something we've never had before the town council in all the years I've been on. And I think it was a very intense and informative and a lot of information. I kind of feel like where it's going to go, it's going to be 4-4 again, but I do make a motion to reconsider the motion to add to the agenda.
Okay, we, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Lombardi?
No.
Ms. Ali?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
No.
Palmieri?
Yes, to remove it. Okay, so that fails, so the issue is still before us.
I'll make a motion to approve the sewer committee's recommendation of the inclusion of parcel 170069, known as 295 Lanning Street, which includes a land swap with similar property on West Street that the developer owns.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve?
And a second?
We have a second, okay. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Ricchio?
I just want to say that, you know, we set up these committees for a reason and it's to keep, keep the time off the floor essentially. This is one of the main reasons why it was set up years ago. And to make the meetings go smoother and also to be more well-informed. And the committee came back with a favorable recommendation to the council. Many of us here have zoning backgrounds, as I stated earlier. This is nothing new. Sewer extensions are nothing new at all. Zone change lines, moving zone lines are nothing new at all. It's very obvious that that map was set to the zone lines. And it's, I don't understand why we're, we've had such extensive discussion here, but it seems pretty simple to me.
Okay, I think.
Actually, if I could, actually, I wasn't going to bring this up, but it actually just dawned on me. The vote in the committee was 2-1. And if you base, base it on the rules that govern our town charter, 2 to 1 would not be an affirmative vote based on the rules that govern even the town council. In order to pass something at the council, you need five votes, a majority of the nine members. 2 to 1 is not a, 2 is not a majority of the sewer committee. So I kind of, I, I feel a point of order is in order to indicate that it was affirmative vote of the sewer committee is not accurate based on the rules that govern boards and commissions in Suddington. So.
It's my understanding, though, that this, this thing was turned into a circus at the committee level and, and members of the sewer committee were intentionally not coming.
Mr. Ricchio, I wasn't done. You interrupted me. I'm just making a point that it was a 2 to 1 vote and I don't think two votes on a five-member board constitutes a majority of the vote. So I'm not suggesting that we have to send it back to committee, but I'm, I just want to put that on the record now since there seems to be a lot of threatening of legal action and things like that. So I want to put that on the record now because based on the rules that govern boards and commissions in Suddington, that's usually how it works. But I, I don't know for certain how it would work on this particular issue.
I believe, I believe a court of law would also uphold the fact that citizens of this community or applicants to this community, whether they're residents or businesses, have a right to due process. And for the record, it's my understanding that there was not due process given because of the fact that people were intentionally skipping sewer committee meetings so they didn't have to act on this because they were afraid of whatever the outcome may be. That is not appropriate action of any board or commission in this community to do to any member of the community, whether they're trying to come in and pay taxes or they currently pay taxes.
Mr. Ricchio, this is the first I've heard of that. This is exactly, all these conversations are exactly why I did not put it on the agenda in the first place after hearing information precedent setting tonight. I purposely didn't put it on and I voted no to add it to the agenda for the same reason. I, I cannot believe that we're making a decision after just hearing information tonight that has never been done according to our town manager. Even at the end of the conversations, there's debate back and forth between our town manager and Attorney Macarillo over whether or not, whether or not items can be done.
Put on the big boy pants, it happens all the time. All the time.
Mike, it's ridiculous.
That's not, that's not. That's so out of order. You are so out of order for that comment.
That's ridiculous, Mike.
Could I speak, please?
Councilwoman Triano.
Thank you. I, I am voting on behalf of this motion for a number of reasons. First of all, something is very weird about this whole evening. I've never seen so much hubbub about changing a sewer line. And so that in and of itself.
We've never done it.
Well, we've, we've changed sewer lines before.
Not like this.
Well, that's because there's been a lot more discussion about this than ever before. So that leaves me suspect. The fact of the matter is every case will be judged on its own merit. And we, as the council, there's no precedent setting. So we, we choose that this case, which seems very reasonable, cutting through the church property to, to help this developer, sounds very appropriate. The next time, or if the next time, because it's never happened before, if there's a next time.
What's the rush?
We will...
What's the rush?
May I finish?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will judge that on the appropriateness of that project. I don't see any problem in accepting this and, and approving this motion. The sewer committee went on and on in whether we say, well, there were people who are missing, yet the business continues. I think it is absolutely important that we continue to do our job. And, um, and it's, it's very strange to me, this whole, this whole big problem. We've got, it's ridiculous. So anyway, I'm going to support it, and I, I ask that my council members also support this.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, Mr. Lombardi?
Yes, you know, I would like to thank both the applicant and the town staff for the, the data that they came forth with. But for me, it was very simple. They came up with five concrete reasons why this makes sense for the town to do it. And the town staff came up with basically zero, because I don't buy the, the capacity argument. And I understand the precedent argument, the domino effect. But as Councilwoman Triano said, and attorney, the assistant town attorney, there's great discretion with the town council. And I have a lot of faith in the future council. I've said this before. I have a lot of faith that each case will be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. So I, I'm okay with this. You know, I, I understand it is, it is a big issue, but there was plenty of facts laid out in front of us tonight. So, and for the record, as I stated before, we are not approving or not approving this project. So...
It's only the sewer issue.
Right. If people are opposed to this project, that will come before the planning and zoning at a future date. So we're just voting on this little sewer thing. I know I've said it before, but it's worth mentioning. So for me, I, I think the facts in the presentation spoke for themselves.
Mr. Ricchio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a question. How many members are on the sewer committee?
Five.
Five. Five members on the sewer committee. Three voted on this. Passed two to one. Is three, town attorney, is three a quorum of a five-member committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion...
Mr. Chair, you know what? I, I feel the need to say something. And I didn't appreciate the comment earlier that it would be decent for someone that, who the council, Mr. McElroo feels that, you know, the person that he feels should recuse themselves, it would be, it would, they would be decent only if they announced themselves. Well, obviously everyone up here knows that it's me that he's speaking of, that he feels that I should recuse myself because I am the chairperson of the open space committee. Well, and because a year and a half ago, or whenever it was, this particular parcel was one of the sites in town that the open space committee had helped to put into its coffers. That being said, there are many parcels all over our community that we reach out to and try to garner for our open space coffers. And guess what, folks? As you can all see, a lot of times it doesn't work. And you never hear about it because it's executive session. I don't agree that I should recuse myself from this because I am the chairperson of a council subcommittee, doing my due diligence as I have been asked to do by both this council and the voters. But may I also add that as the chairperson, we all know that you don't act or operate in a vacuum. It wasn't up to just me whether a, a letter went to the property owner to try to garner this property. It was up to the entire committee, of which two other people on this council are also on that committee, as is someone from our planning and zoning commission. We have council subcommittees where we do our diligence. We've all been involved in conversations with regard to the work that we do on our council subcommittees. So I just couldn't sit here and let that get by me. I am a volunteer. I do my diligence. I am a fair person. Some of the things that were alleged in the letter that went to the town attorney were, to me, slanderous and downright false. So it's been an upsetting afternoon.
Dawn, good for you. You know, it seems like you've had the target on your back for a while now, and it's like one meeting after another meeting after another meeting. So I'm glad you stood up and defended yourself, because Dawn works tirelessly on so many issues in this town.
Point of order, can we move the motion, please?
So, since it's okay to attack her, and now let me defend her, this is another example of what's going wrong with this council. So Dawn, good for you. Keep doing the good work. And I feel very bad that you were called out like that in a letter which was totally not appropriate to a colleague of mine.
Okay. We have a motion before us. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Ms. Ali.
No.
Pulis.
I think this exception will set a bad precedent. It's not in the best interest of this town. No.
Ricchio.
Yes.
Triano.
Yes.
Barry.
No.
Dietzick.
Yes.
Palmieri.
I am abstaining from voting on this. I did not feel this should be on the agenda tonight. I voted no to add it to the agenda, and I do not feel we have enough information to make an informed decision tonight. So I am abstaining. So the motion fails.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Point of order, does it, does it an abstention?
Busway.
Oh, we have another...
Oh, the busway. Geez.
Does an abstention...
Getting ahead of myself.
Go to the affirmative?
No.
No, because you need five votes for the council to pass.
Right. So I think we can play the string out. Not going anywhere. That's why people don't like us. We're playing games. It's four-four. None of us can go home. I'll make a motion to table.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Table what?
The, the...
Tabling the sewer.
A motion, I'll second the motion to table the sewer discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the issue is tabled. Moving on to the bus route.
Okay, I'm going to let Dawn make the motion.
Yes. So I'm so happy that Nancy came back, and so did Donna. I make a motion that we approve the busway. Is it the, do you want to say the phase one busway, Mr. Palmieri?
To use, to use the language from this, from this state today.
Perfect.
The motion should be whether to approve further study of a possible route with public transportation in Sullington. So...
Perfect. That is the exact motion that I make.
You're approving, oh, wait. So we're approving the study. We're not approving the busway. We're approving the study for the busway.
It is, it is word for word what the DOT commissioner said to, said today.
And this motion will allow what?
Will allow DOT to continue the work, because as she said at the last meeting, there is a lot of legwork before the busway can actually come to town.
So it will, the, so DOT, I just really want to know what we're voting on. So DOT will continue to work to make a, make a plan for the busway?
Correct. This will, this, this will be an affirmative vote from the council, hopefully, to move forward with the bus route in Sullington.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that's...
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second? Was there a second?
No.
Oh, I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please...
I, I do have a discussion.
Go ahead.
I just want to state on the public record that of all the communication I got regarding this matter, in person and in email, was in, in favor of exploring the bus, busing, doing the continued research. I had no opposing information sent to me as a counselor.
Okay. Any other, I mean, any other, Mr. Lombardi?
Just two words. Nancy Chiro. That's all I have to say.
Okay, so...
And George. We have to say George.
And the crew.
George.
Before we, before we vote on this, this has been an honor. And Nancy, I know I've been working with you to, to, to get this to this point. So again, as Tom said, thank you for all your work. The commissioner, the commission on people with disabilities, our renamed committee, I'd like to thank all of them, because they did a lot of legwork, especially George, who, who has really done a lot of work to bring us to this point. So this is the next step in really looking into our future in Sullington. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Ms. Ali.
An overwhelming yes.
Pulis.
Yes.
Ricchio.
An overwhelming yes.
Triano.
An overwhelming yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Dietzick.
Yes.
Palmieri.
Yes. Congratulations. Okay, that passes unanimously?
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
There's George, we see him.
Now we're looking for the last motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn the very interesting meeting tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
See everybody in court.
I know.
Yeah.
Whack-a-doodle.